... Stuff down, but down so far. So they gotta go to a toxic. And the stipulation is they can't leave the state. So the state doesn't have a dump site, so. They need to just.
I don't know.
Yeah, but maybe they can shut it down.
Yeah.
No, Scott.
Yeah.
We're already. Well, we can't influence. I'm not looking at all that. You put a state of. Two falls. I mean, had to. I wouldn't have went ahead and had a testing. And just put it right around behind the glass. I had to think also if they could have accidentally touched it. And the people were prepared. We're happy to be stopped. But. It'd be for the.
What is the? Do you know what's in those?
It's a person's genetic. There's some person's genetic. Agents. It goes up. And then you always roll down this way. They said they gotta get rid of it if somebody is doing it. It's left. Say it was. I just think that's good. I don't see anybody that's good. It ends up with cancer. Who just opened up a can of worms and just left it all? They do things on their own.
I just thought that was the craziest. A bunch of animals. Which are just.
See how many. Fine, maybe it's sad. It ain't bad, it's just. Gee, I can see.
Yeah. No, that was. It's hidden underneath his.
Good way to do that.
Not with it, yeah.
For.
Social Marquee. We had it in the planning of the. The hearing and then you. Right until the commission approved it. It was. The board of directors for the eighteen.
I'm just challenging.
Yeah.
Kind of posing the house.
I know.
You pass that out for your bottom of the fish.
That would sound like a.
If we got the days. So. So when we keep them. Then. This was way better for your diet. We just. Jim. We just know the way. We just pass it. We still.
And now they just. He brought up that being on all of his. Just.
Jamie.
Yes.
We were thinking about. That's all. To pay up. So just move. And do it.
I. I think that would be fine that they won't give you. Do you think?
It's great.
You can get chairs if you need to. You guys want some chairs? So.
You first stop that one. You first stop that one? Seven twenty seven thousand.
I guess. We sort of. Because it's.
Oh, sure.
Okay, really.
My. My conservative.
This time he isn't ready to come up.
The doctor should get some gas. If ever a book can sell a job. But you just. Like you write up these two changes. Is sufficient copy of the meeting. She's just greater than twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen. So yeah, but I don't. I'll just make. And then. I'm not calling the maiden murder for that. So how do we do any connection? Me? Forever?
Okay, we have the conditional use application from Millardale. For a. Swine facility. And um, I can leave Bradus here on their behalf if you wanna talk or.
Again, you bet.
Okay.
I don't have any formal handouts or anything. Do you have the?
Yep, so Doug can be to me. The.
Which one do you want?
The top one, the top well in there. Has decided to commit. So then if you go to that.
You go to the other?
This one here. They love the same thing.
Well, that's not good. Oh, yeah, so. That was pretty easy.
Yes.
I know, I was pretty chatty and I was like, there you go.
Yeah.
All that, that's the line.
By the way, Doc. Yeah, they work backwards. The titles are opposite. I did that.
With another?
Yeah.
Ready?
Yeah, okay.
So my name is Brad Warner. I'm a swine engineer from Yankton. Working with. Millerdale and Edward on this project. It's forty eight hundred bed deep pit swine finishing barn. That will be located approximately three miles south southeast. Of the existing colony. This will be a separate facility from the colony. Um, it'll be owned by the colony, but it's somewhere separate from it. At the DNR level, we're gonna combine them all into one just to simplify the paperwork. Nutrient management stand.
That there's some border. Isn't there? Isn't there something you have back to teach on that?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
So um, if you want us to stop right there. Then I'll just go through kind of our letter and that current team page. Uh, document that's up there. And basically just follow the rules within Anne County's. Permit for within. Within Anne County's conditional use permit for this, which is article five, section five one five. Colony currently has a DNR permit. As I said earlier, we're gonna add this barn to that permit. So we'll have one set of records at the DNR for them to keep. And overlook and monitor the site. The nutrient management plan fields are gonna be the same fields that we currently have. In the existing colony plan. Which is several fold more than what we need. And your requirements. You wanna make sure that the facility as it's constructed or while it's constructed, as you say, at the end. Needs the requirements of the DNR and approved plans, specifications, et cetera. We'll be involved during that process making visits to the site. To inspect the rebar and. Make sure that's built according to the plan. So if there are any changes, we'll work with the DNR to make sure that any changes, proposed changes would be acceptable with them before we have come out. And then um, we go from there. We will item number two under that cover letter was stormwater permit. We are required to get a stormwater permit because of constructional tape. Will disturb more than one acre of land. And so we will get that through the DNR. We'll have prevention plan, stormwater pollution prevention plan, erosion control practices, all that will be part of that permit that we get from the DNR. That's a requirement. Because of the size, but it's also a requirement. At the county level, so we'll get that. Uh, the county will be copied on all of the approvals that the DNR gives us. For the plans, for the capable stuff, as well as stormwater permit. We can provide any and all information to the county, but thank you for the request. You go. I think you could scroll to. That next page. It's at an angle there, but those. Those are the current um. Might the control. Shift plus might be a little rosated. Uh, that's. Yeah. Yeah, I won't work in there. So not in the game. So that, that just shows. I'll leave that there. Four thousand acres or less. That's the current list as of February of this year with the DNR for all of the land within the nutrient management plan. Hey, if you go. To the next page, yeah, that's broken too, sorry. That shows. All the fields, so north is over here to the left. But this is the proposed barn, we're gonna be. The location of it, sorry. And then here's uh, this millerdale colony proper, right here. So we're one east and. Two and a half, two, two and a half south. So if you scroll up this a little bit, it'll. Or I'm sorry, scroll down. That'll give you the balance of the fields there. And again, those are the fields in the current plan for the entire colony. For what they have for existing animals at, at the home place as. And um, as we add these forty eight hundred debt into that. New location, uh, we still have more than sufficient land several times local view. Which allows us to rotate around as needed. You go again, I'm hoping that map is. That map does not. Crooked, so. I feel a little close received. So here's our proposed site. And if you go up. It's not on this sheet, but if you go up a little bit and then to, to the north and then west, that's where the colony is currently. Here's a proposed site and we got, um, there's three residential residences, excuse me, within that setback. We don't have any other. I don't wanna say issues, but we don't have any other encroachments with respect to wells or waterways or any of the other requirements that the county has. But we do have those three residences. That are within that setback, we did obtain. Jamie has copied. We do have a waiver from each of those three. Residences. And we have two adults.
Yes.
Which would be the two north. These two houses up here, uh, there's two adult residences and then this one residence, excuse me, and then this one, there's one adult resident. So we have signatures for all five. That live within the two miles. Comes three separate waivers that will get filed at the. Registered D N R office there. Um, that is. I guess what we believe would fulfill the requirements to ask for a variance to place this where it is. We have no objections. No real.
Why would you need?
Questions or anything like that.
Why would, why would you need a variance?
Uh, the rules say we have to be, I believe. Two months, we have to be camping within two miles of the residence.
Unless you have a waiver.
Unless you have a waiver, yeah.
That would require a variance.
Well, that's just part of our conditional use. Branders.
Yeah.
So he's. He's fulfilling those.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure. Again. But I thought the rule stated like. If we don't need that, we need waivers, but even with the waivers, we still need to request a variance. It's how I, it's how I read it. Just because we have the waivers. Didn't, wasn't a guarantee, that's how I was reading the rules. Perhaps that's wrong. But we obtained the waivers on the list just to make sure we had everything.
So it's number six of the items that are required. And it just says that it shall not be located within two miles of an occupied residence. And sixty six percent of the full time available residents within the area. Shall have a wage the same day and then working. So. I believe that the, the conditional use permit. Is allowing for that since they have. Obtained the signature. Right, Greg?
I would agree. I just don't think we should.
Yeah, and if we, if we don't need a variance because we have the waivers.
Yeah, we don't.
That's just a mislabel on my behalf, and I apologize. I just wanted to make sure we recovered that. Go. Next page, that's a, it's a little. Uh, a little cleaner, maybe. At least it is on paper. Um, we're coming in off of the street here, we're back three, four hundred feet, I believe. And then we set up a closed barn, it's a little compost structure up here. Or we'll manage mortalities. And then that square down here is a tractor shed, this house, a tractor, a blade, mower, et cetera, so get in and out. Um, it's a deep pit, ten foot deep pit, so we'll have more than a year's worth of storage underneath the building for these animals. I don't know. It's a pretty straightforward building, I don't. I don't wanna. I, I see these buildings every day, so if there's any questions, I'd like to answer any questions. Well, the design good, so we did warnings, uh. From, from what I was told, warnings are good, they have no issues. No water table or gravel deposits, it was a good clean plate throughout the whole profile. Very suitable for this type of building. Will. Increase. And water table or copper furniture, that's a pretty good site.
For those that aren't familiar with my neighborhood, where our. County road that we call the Camp Dakota Road and then the Ten Mile Road, uh, the Double E Galvin Road, south of town. Intersect, this is three quarters of a mile south of that intersection on the east side of the road is where it will be located.
Do they not use incinerators for deceased anymore?
Uh, this one we're using upwards of composting.
Yeah, is that. By the wayside?
Um.
As a method of business.
Of all of the projects that we've, we've done over the last. Let's say ten years, we've done a lot of them, I don't. We maybe have one incinerator, but. They've all, for the most part, been composts. Yeah, and it used to be the animal, the animal industry board does regulate mortality management through the state veterinarian's office. And their, their proof methods were burial, rendering, or incineration. Composting was kind of a, you had to apply each time. And so we did that and because it was becoming so common, like every facility was doing it, animal industry board adjusted their rules. And, and put together a little more guideline on composting, on composting is the fourth acceptable method of mortality management. And it just seems to work out really, really well. You know, from a biosecurity standpoint, we're not bringing extra vehicles on or rendering standpoint. We don't have open pits where we're burying them. They're covered up, we have, we have more space than we need, so we, we have primary and secondary bays. So that we can always rotate primary bay into a secondary bay. As we move them around, they're already fluffed, et cetera, et cetera. Asking for. They actually. They're looking for a primary bay. Um, so the material that we use in, for bedding purposes. We're not using. Turkey litter or manure, we use corn stalks, bean stub, bean stub, or whatever they can come up with. Um, so we, we don't have the DNR regulating it, it's animal industry board regulation that covers us under our management of it. However, any material that is removed from that compost facility. Does become regulated underneath our nutrient management plan, so we have to test that material. Calculate the rates, apply, keep records of the language and all that, just like we would pump the bit out. So that, that does give. Does become part of the nutrient plan kind of in a. Secondary way there. Any other questions? Uh, can we go to the next page? So. Um, I think the next four. There were the preliminary plans that we put together for the facility from a concrete detail standpoint. We will go in once we get the information from the geotechnical report, we'll go in and adjust as needed. Either footing sizes, if we need to make them bigger because of weaker soils. Or wall remark if for some reason we have wall pressures, um. The soil is exerting more pressure than we had originally designed on the walls, we'll go in. Add reinforcements to offset that, so we don't have any issues. And I don't foresee, based on what I've. Heard over the weekend from the program. I don't foresee any need to. Deep it up, in fact, we could back off. On some of, uh, some of the assumptions that we made. We, we assume the more worst case scenario and we need a little lot better case scenarios. Which is good. Um. That's pretty much all having the. Pretty clean and clean.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Not for you.
Not for me, okay.
You guys, Jamie and the rest of our representatives are probably not there. Is the sales tax refund still in place for these kind of facilities?
So. That exceeds only dollars or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Isn't that a? Pretty substantial. You can read with this, I don't like using that as a noun. For all facility.
We got one last year, three years ago. Two years. Sizable amount of money.
And I mean, is the developer? Developer, developer that would join us to that?
Uh, no, it would be uh, the attitude.
Yeah.
In this state, which is Millerdale would be the absolute. So we can research that.
Okay, they would apply for it on our behalf, correct?
I don't, I don't remember the exact thing. I know the program we were talking about, it's a ratio used, it's a, we did use an open X on. One for sure, and we've used it in other areas throughout the.
It's like four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's a. Except they said it's a percent difference, they said. Sales tax. Get into the county.
Where the materials uh, were purchased. Were they in state purchase?
Yeah, we purchased some of it.
Cause I know that stuff is hot. In county purchases, we gotta, we gotta sales that I agree with.
It's, it's basically the state, state sales tax and federal exit tax, isn't it?
Exit tax, permanent.
Yes.
Uh, we send them in the text.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. They really, they really.
They apply for it. See how that works. I can go a lot more. Right over. Eastward side of the colony, the Detroit.
It's going to take a lot of time.
You can do it to a recovery. But that, you're doing a public recovery. Or it's ending lanes, the one out from. I would work. Your main one three and go there. If you need to go, it would be uh. The volume needed would be below the water ex, uh, storm, which is. Twenty five thousand gallons a day. For the most, or twenty five thousand gallons a day. We have to look and see like how big of a pump you put in that may trigger water rights. But that's more of the money we work through and we keep that county moving on.
Leonard did talk to me earlier this summer about their uh, proposed plan. And uh, he, he said it's beneficial to them to, for a couple of reasons, move the hog closer to the application acres. That way they don't have to either pump, pump or haul manure. Um, and I, I believe Leonard said something about also uh. Disease prevention, if, if by chance they would get something in this barn down there, maybe wouldn't get it at home, if they got something at home, maybe wouldn't get it in this barn down there. So it spreads the risk out for them some too.
We can get an answer to that along the way, we don't have to stop dead just because that question.
Sure. I, I guess I don't have anything. You know, like I said, I'm glad we answered any questions. Go back and get answers if I don't have today.
Well. The issuance of the conditional use permit is not gonna be dependent on the answer to that question, so don't worry.
I'm gonna. Do you mean? Can we have anybody on the crowd that says that's opposed to this facility? Do you want to speak?
I can say a little louder.
I can't.
Is there, is there anybody here that's opposed to this here facility, do they want to speak? Anybody out there? If not, I guess we can move on. Is anybody else here have any questions? Hope they can tell it over.
Is it, what do you mean, is everything in order?
Everything, I'm here to scan order.
So what is the status of the? Can I have the nutrient plan application at all?
The uh, status of DNR permit?
Yeah.
So they currently have one for the existing stuff. We did get the warnings last week late, and so I'm hoping by the time I get back to Yankton tonight, we'll have the report, otherwise we'll have it in the morning. And then I will send that tomorrow, the latest to the DNR. Or the day I get the report, I will send a prevent application to the DNR. And then they will public notice that, so it will come back locally, it will be public notice from the DNR. For the comments.
I would, I would think that could be just added as a condition for approval, correct? If there's, if there's something, if there's something that isn't back yet, we would approve.
Contingent.
Contingent upon. Uh, that recording.
I think we should approve DNR permit to get the voting permit.
Yes.
So without the DNR permit.
How long does that process take?
How long does that process take from there?
Uh, with the public notice, it's a thirty day minimum. So we're hoping, because we're not, we're not changing the nutrient plan, which is sometimes part of the, the reason it takes a little longer. So I'm, I'm hopeful that thirty-five, forty days, it's turned back around. It's, like you said, pretty straightforward, ain't good, unless you put in a single warrant.
So you're saying your nutrient management, if it comes back, everything works out. We're just, we have thirty days before you can start construction.
And it would be, from a DNR standpoint?
Right.
It's, uh, thirty days before we can start doing concrete work. From, from a DNR standpoint, we could also take them all and get ready. And have everything ready, except no concrete, and we get approval, we can pour concrete, five minutes later, but we don't want to have that all opened up, because we rain and.
Mr. Chairman, I would move with the Planning and Standing Board recommend for the county commission issuance of additional use program on this project.
Do I hear a second?
I will second Jim's motion, um, with a comment that Millard Dale are next door neighbors of mine. They're very good members, um, members of the community, very helpful members of the community, um, very good stewards. So I will second with that comment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Getting unwilled forward to the commission. Can I get an adjournment from, uh, other commissioners, if you are there for, for the commission?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm gonna call the regular county commission meeting and start with the consent agenda.
Something unusual out here. Jim's got a couple recommendations on this.
Uh, I would move, move to approve the consent agenda with just a couple of notations. In our minutes from August first, I, I believe it was page four, I don't remember for sure. There was discussion in the minutes about, um, surpassing our old road graders because we had purchased three new ones. It is currently written in there as their two thousand and sixteens, and if I remember correctly, they're two thousand and eighteens. It's a pretty minor adjustment, but, uh, that should be corrected. And then, uh, our August fifteenth, we convened at seven oh three in adjournment, or, or seven o'clock and adjourned at five oh three. So unless, unless we were so fast in those three minutes that we gained two hours, we should probably clear, correct, that to seven oh three.
That's a real long. That's a real long.
Well, yeah, it could be, we didn't have a date there, correct, but, so just those two corrections. I will move to, I will move to approve consent agenda.
Second. Is there any, who has any, I don't know, notations when you consent agenda? I've got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, gang, none, settle agendas.
If you want to take the position you just presented here.
Well, the, I don't. With them, we get their DNR permit. The reason I'm hesitant about what we're doing is because it does not appear in our agenda. That we are gonna, that we are gonna take this issue up. And the only reason I'm hesitant to do it is if someone would happen to come forward with a really large complaint against them and we end up in court. I guarantee with this not being on our agenda, will cause headaches for all parties involved.
But we do meet again before a month.
Do we meet again before a month, or?
Potentially. It's not guaranteed, it was your kid.
But even if we, even if we met, if we had it on our agenda for our, our next month's meeting, is that gonna put you guys way behind? Since you moved to DNR, there's something to work on, so, uh, probably.
This should be okay on our.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to put you, I don't know how to do this. I'm, I'm trying to cover, I'm trying to cover us and I'm also trying to cover you.
That's exactly what you're saying.
Because if we don't do this right, and someone objects, this is grounds for objection. Do pay that.
I was correct, uh, that it wasn't on the agenda, but we can, we can have a, uh, we can have a, we can have a three or five minute meeting to approve this if there's not opposition to it or whatever.
Well, I just can take it, they can wait till the next week, they'll say that it'll be all right. So let's just put it on, put it on the agenda for the next month's meeting.
And just so.
Second or third of October, is that what you?
Uh, third, the third.
Just so everybody knows here, in case you haven't run into one of these before, this body was, uh, prior to our sitting, because the Planning and Standing Board, okay, it recommended to this body county commissioners approval, and it was unanimous. So I think you can relax a little bit. I wouldn't sweat too much about the outcome of the final meeting or official approval that is given, okay? Just so you know that. It's the same people sitting around the same time.
That means in October is a better safe than sorry.
Yeah.
That's, that's the only reason. I got a little bit of a, I did, I did.
Would it be, would it be beneficial, I mean, I, I think you guys could request that we would have a special meeting if you mean it occurred before then. As long as we have notice and we get it on the agenda and do this properly, I think, um, you know, if you, if it would be.
Two notices, right?
We did make two notices for the planning.
For that needs only.
Yeah, we're, we're covered as far as.
If it would be, we're really beneficial, and you guys would request us to hold a special meeting, I said we could, we might even have to gather to do it. We could do it, I don't even know where to start.
Yeah, if it doesn't make any difference, we could just wait.
Just wait till the third and do it then. I just, I prefer just to make everything right. That's, I would feel comfortable doing it that way.
But it's okay if you guys wait till the third?
I would think that would be ideal. Okay, then we're gonna move on to the flats.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're probably gonna have a tough meeting. Uh, budget. Time, hey, time not great.
I'm not either.
There's a lot of balance there. We have a lot of balance, but I'm sure I really don't have.
Uh, do we have flats?
Yeah, there's definitely a remarkable body to walk over.
And I would move it from the shady flat.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
You can do it.
I heard you.
Okay, that's. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Bring them, that one is okay. The Schultz flats.
Move for its acceptance.
Second. I'll, I'll listen here. We call Joe Pepper.
Just so Kim raise your hand and I'll call early.
Okay, why do you want to move?
Jamie, Jamie, you got it, you got it approved.
Did it purple? You did?
Flats.
Three times.
Yeah. Did it? Oh, I thought you said did it. Yeah, we did. Tell her she can relax.
Hello, I just wanted to let you know, I'm in the process of taking a taxi. And I get down to the wire, so September twenty ninth is the day that they have, our owner has to come to be able to send a new deal in. Otherwise, it won't belong to us. On the sixty-first day, I will take, I'll do a catch for the date to the county. So I just let you know that, so what is, it's looking like it's going to pile with yours, because I'm not hearing anyone from them.
Okay.
This time keep it up. And also, when it appears a third of the tire purses up in county in Minnesota. It's about taking a taxi and a tax sale. And then they also sold it for more than what the taxes were on the property or that person owned them property. And that person took them to court and they won. So we're gonna find a little bit more Alan lab at convention, so maybe we'll just come back to you sometime and let you know the whole of that, so see what we need to do. Because they, Minnesota files are taxed, so maybe do taxes too.
You mean the, the taxpayer got the excess on the sale?
Yes. That was just in all of them. The tax, the taxes over ten thousand dollars, property for a hundred, three thousand dollars. Property is worth so much more.
Oh, yeah.
I think they're, they're covered, their, their debts is already determined and back and right to the county, so.
So that's, we sold it for more than what the taxes were. And the person who previously owned the property got the.
Took it to court and she got the.
She got the dollar. And that, if it came off the taxi, we ended up with one. The person with water, for the end of the day.
Yeah, and I, I didn't count it with the whole thing, but we're gonna talk about convention. I'll just maybe get back to it in a moment and that, to see what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's interesting.
Lot of extra paperwork.
What?
Lot of extra paperwork, I would imagine.
Good afternoon.
Hey.
Just the only thing I have on the agenda for you guys is the signature on the, uh, early PG plan, that I do it here. More of a finale, get it on the agenda, make a motion, which we agree on.
Make a motion, I mean, exactly, really good.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, neither.
Uh, I have a chef's questions for you. Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Are you, uh, how's the Buffalo?
Good, we're, uh, been down there a few nights just to get a, basically, and what's gotta be done. I'll hit the ground running on October first. Kind of sounds like their courtesy has left them hanging, so I told them I wouldn't do that to them if they didn't help us something. Right now, their biggest issue is radios. They ran away with a P twenty-five changeover, so they have no radios at this time, so. It's gonna be one of the major issues, I'll be working this right away. Good. Thanks.
Uh, I'm just going to tell you that the library received a grant called Community Connect, Fostering Digital Access. It's a grant through the American Library Association in partnership with Capital One and the Public Library Association. And it's an organization now called Everyone On. And their goals are to expand internet service capacity, or, excuse me, service capacity for rural libraries, improve digital access for rural, rural library patrons, and equip libraries with resources to assist patrons in establishing sustaining home internet connections. So what, what is it about? We get a fleet of five internet hotspots and five lab caps that are going to be in communication through the library. So people can check them out for one week at a time, either or both. Um, and when they return, they complete a survey, uh, to see how this grant has helped people living in rural communities. We also have to create a policy for lending, which I have, I can forward that to you if you're interested. And we have, we also will put on three programs. One digital literacy program, one financial literacy program, and one program about the Affordable Connectivity Program, which is a federal communications conditions program for, um, discounts on internet services for people that are needing help with that. So the two thousand dollars is for accessories and other needs that come about with having these devices in circulation.
So the devices are part of the program already, or they're not, even have a page for them?
Right, they're.
It's part of the program in addition to the balance?
Correct. Yep, we already have all the devices. We're just getting all the security software uploaded and getting a charging station quick.
Did you make that application yourself?
The application?
For the money?
Did I write the grant? Yeah.
Good for you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, they also sent me to Chicago to the ALA conference. Um, and there were fourteen other rural libraries that received the grant this year. And this is the second year of the pilot, the first year of sixteen libraries had it, and then they got to repeat this year. So there's an opportunity maybe to continue.
I was just gonna ask, before, uh, are there, are there, have you been, have you ever received, or have you just bargained?
Yeah, yeah, potentially, or continuing on with the program. And then, um, you know, we'll see how they're being used, if that's necessary, or maybe they're not being used. But I think, I think it will be a really great thing, I imagine, homes of elderly people that don't have connection. If they have visitors from out of town or something, that became an issue in my family. Um, or young kids, now that they're doing e-learning days instead of snow day makeups, I think it would be an opportunity for those families to stay up to date with schoolwork.
Awesome. So good, first thing.
Yeah, thanks.
Good for you.
Thanks.
So the request from my office is to have you approve by motion a supplement to a credit, two thousand dollars received. So move.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Give us a second.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any others?
That I would use my time to the, you know, the delegation.
Do you want us coming up, friend, or? We might do it, we have to stay here.
Probably more sensible for you right there.
Okay, well, also, we're not, um, you all know me, Senator Brian Brightley, Mr. Twenty-three. Uh, I'm vice chair of Senate Appropriations. And I'll turn it over to these guys to introduce themselves as well.
I'm Scott Warren, Jeff Swich, I'm a deputy electric, I'm a district board three officer in Columbus. I'm on the education committee, health, human services, and veterans.
Jay, this is Mr. Twenty-three, from here on the seat. Uh, I'm on the state affairs, county committee, and veteran affairs.
So just want to highlight a few things again, we're, um, we, uh, really get a lot, we have a lot of team reviews in our district, and that's something that we probably noticed we haven't had in the past. So we're trying to get as many of the county commission, uh, coming as we can in our off season here, and hopefully we can continue to do that going forward. We've met with Potter County so far, um, Falcon County, and, and Walworth County. Walworth, Potter, and Falcon so far, and then we're scheduled for Edmonds County here in a couple of weeks.
How many counties are there?
There's seven small counties and then a part of Brown County. So, um, so anyway, that's how we're spending our off season. Just want to let you know very briefly, um, largely we did about a seven percent, um, policy increase, you know, for education, state employees, five percent for providers, but then there was some targeted dollars in there as well. So that's kind of the finance piece. Um, let me know if you are interested in any specific builds. Beyond that, the state finished fiscal year with about twelve million dollar surplus, and then, uh, revenues exceeded expenses. In addition to that, then, there was around seventy million dollars of unused spending. And so there were, I don't, I don't remember the exact number, eighty-eight million, we counted like that surplus at the end of fiscal year twenty-three, so they're basically doing their debt. So we've got some dollars in the bank that we can use for next year, those going to a reserve fund, and then it just gets built into a future year, basically spend on, um, some projects, do we want to take a look at it or whatever?
What's the projected loss of revenue, one to four, one five to four point two on sale?
Hundred and twenty-five million dollars is the reduction.
So you got seventy of it in the bank already?
Eighty.
Eighty?
Yeah, but, but again, some of that, only, only twelve million of that was increased revenue over expenses. Uh, the other was just unused spending. So, um, kids that didn't go to schools, we didn't pay schools, um, you know, Medicaid, people didn't get sick, so we didn't pay hospitals, nursing homes, et cetera. Those types of things, so unused budgeted dollars. So the reversion, they, the seventy-some million dollars of reversion and the twelve million dollars of extra revenue goes into a budgeted reserve fund. And then the budgeted reserve fund gets the bills back into next year's, um, operation.
When do those Medicaid increases, uh, in terms of reimbursement to healthcare providers for elderly to kick in, like in the rest?
Uh, July one.
Oh, they're.
So they have the season now already. Yep. Yes. I don't remember.
It's got a huge difference.
I don't remember a good stand here in town, but, but for most facilities, it was pretty significant increase. Some facilities, you know, wasn't quite as large, but it just, for a lot of reasons, depending on their funding formula from years back. Um, and then, and then percentage increases over the years. This, the, the new funding formula add five percent plus it ended, um, up to one hundred percent of allowable costs. Which allowable costs is kind of the term there. Hundred percent. Hundred percent, it was a pretty big deal. And that's the main reason, um, when the funding formula was put in place, there was no allowance for travelers. And, I mean, nursing homes have been using travelers' staff for fifteen, twenty years right now. And so that was just an expense that they always had that was not allowed for. And there was other non allowable expenses out there as well.
Is it seventeen, um, nursing homes in South Florida that closed?
Right in that ballpark.
Are there more closings anticipated?
Uh, there was one that closed here last week or announced they were closing. Um, South of Rapid City, South of Grand Lake here. But no. But it's not every time, uh, announced they will be closing. There's a number of other ones that are in, you know, critical financial status. Uh, but we're trying to see what this new funding formula, how that impacts them. We do a summer study working on that as well, trying to find ways to, um, assist long-term care. Uh, as we, as, as you may know, all the nursing homes in the Sioux Falls market are full and have a significant waiting list. Same thing in Rapid City. And then in most of the rest of the state, uh, most of the nursing homes are not full. It's just simply enough, it's a matter of matching the number of staff they have with the number of patients they can take care of. And so, depending on the financial situation is that it depends on, you know, on their open number they're taking care of.
Do you guys have any, uh, time-sensitive knowledge about the financial health of any particular rest homes in the state? Do you know whether this one is in trouble or that one is nearing being in trouble? Or this one is just about to go off the edge? Do you have that kind of information? Does the state?
I don't have that information. I don't think the state does. The nursing home association would have that. Uh, but, uh, again, every community's gonna be a little bit differently. If it's a local, locally-owned nonprofit, you know, their ability to raise funds are a little bit easier than corporate nonprofits. For-profits, of course, aren't raising any funds. And there's, at least three nursing homes in the state are for-profit. You know, so it, it just depends on, uh, a specific nursing home, a specific community.
Do you guys have any knowledge as to what percentage of residents at this facility opposed to that facility are Medicaid residents?
Yes, we have that data, yep.
Okay.
That's been the county's biggest challenge. They were more than ninety percent Medicaid-dependent for the last decade. And just basically proved that that's not a sustainable business model.
Okay.
So again, um, kind of along that line, so there's a launcher here, summer study, I'm on that one. Um, there's a work group that's a part of that, and it's a community-based services work group. I'm chairing that work group. That's really targeted around, um, what can we do each for our local community? So, um, transportation services, homemaker services, um, other, other aids and services in town that we can offer to support folks that they can stay at home longer. Uh, and then there's a number of other work groups, again, in relation to nursing homes and labor force, et cetera. There's also a summer study in relation to county funding. And I don't know if you've been listening to any of those. Uh, I listened to some of the meetings so far. What do you guys have on it? Do you guys have some general view?
So, I, I was, I'm not on that committee, but I have some information on it. These are just some of the ideas that we've got, thrown around here in committee of potential legislation to make them up. So emphasize that strongly, these are just ideas. So in September, we're gonna have another meeting, we're gonna try and round it down to actual legislation that we want to put forward. Try and help with some of the county funding. So far, kind of one side of the thing, big one is, especially when state level is funding, unfunded mandates and the supermunicipal. So we're gonna try and work on that first, uh, see whether or not there's taxing hell at the county, stuff that we do out here. Uh, after that, you know, there's questions on increasing taxes. There's the SB one issue that's come up, which is a tax limit for a few years, probably twenty fifteen, had to do with roads, increasing that. Governor's office is not inclined to support any kind of tax increases. So it's not likely to see anything like that true, whether it's the one senator has suggested, that has come up in the past. But I got this this morning from somebody in the committee, like I said, these are just ideas, the things they're discussing, the mayor may not come out. Questions on that.
Who gets the other half of the alcohol tax now? If the proposal may eventually be that counties would get fifty instead of twenty-five, and the state get twenty-five instead of fifty? Where's the other fifty?
Well, yes, the state, I don't know, is there a distribution to the cities now?
Hmm, not sure.
I know twenty-five percent of alcohol goes to the county, but I, I'm not sure if seventy-five percent goes to the state right now or, or not. But yeah, majority of it goes to the state. At, at the end of the day, majority of it goes to the state. There might be a percentage that goes to cities, but I'm not positive.
Just in, just in where exact dollars are flowing is probably more likely, certainly, there'll be any chance of getting the ability to raise your own tax.
Seems like county paid, county's probably paid most of the cost of alcohol payers.
Yeah. And that's what they were talking about in the one of the meetings that I'm participating in, because it's a, it's a, it's a fee or a tax, a redistribution to where, um, you know, those entities have to pay this runs of that, that service. And so, so that's, that's a part of that. For, really, the, the summer study is going to, they're not gonna come away with a, a big fix. It's gonna be several of these smaller fixes that hopefully has a positive impact on each county and state. There's also, I don't know, do you have on there consolidation? They are also working on incentive for county consolidations. So we have sixty-six counties, a lot of counties are very exorbitantly populated. Do we need sixty-six counties, sixty-six counties in a state as well? So, um, that's just for discussion. But, uh, but they're, they're trying to work on what would be an appropriate incentive to encourage counties to work with their neighbors or partner with their neighbors more.
With that in mind, that's one reason we invested about six hundred thousand dollars in the elevator.
Okay.
Do we have the VSO, we have four points in there?
Yep, that's on there.
But you're afraid of saving from that holy? Is that?
Part of that conversation is around regionalizing. So, uh, what is our VSO officer here?
Can I? Can I, can I, is your hand in there?
A, a full-time for one person? Okay.
It's not full-time.
Well, not full-time, no.
Or, okay. But that's what they're talking about, is taking multiple counties, hiring a full-time person, um, and then being able to expense that cost. And right now, I don't know what the form, there's a formula in there that limits how much, um, the state brings versus the county's gonna be in so officer. It's.
It's twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent of whatever. Uh, whatever, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Our emergency manager is not taken care of, Hand and Buffalo both. Um, that, that's just a new thing we put together at Buffalo County's request.
Sure.
Your district.
Their, their previous representative didn't give much service, actually hardly any at all. And, uh, they are pretty happy to have Arlen helping them out down there, because there's a lot of stuff they missed out on.
There, there are some benefits to VIM consolidation, you know, it's never been popular yet. So there's, there's cost savings, you know, there's especially administration duties, folks. So it's out there.
So in, in this, if the slow process of consolidating counties or making that a possibility, would you guys be advocating for counties to have to consolidate? Or it would be an option for counties to consolidate? Because if the county thinks, we're getting along fine, we're, we're sorry about that county there or this county there. But we're getting along fine, everything's running smooth, uh.
I think that's what you're running, man, you, you went to a lot of these counties already. And counties have got that map, and you say, oh, we all got something similar. They have no special needs, so we got one county, it's fast hours for roads. They're very educated on it. They hired superintendent, tried to give us all a lesson. Uh, next county, their biggest worry was hiring employees. They want to come to money there, well, they, they have complaints. Uh, they're sitting fine, but it's, yeah, you know, and then, and then, of course, a couple of counties are, uh, jails. Their, their, their revenue is eaten up because where they're located and the amount of crime that got going on in their county. So they're hurting that way, you know? Some counties are looking at building their own jails. Uh, and all of their, their issues, they got to act. Everybody got money to reverse them. So it's, it's different between the other county, that's what, I think it's legislation, what we face is, um, I bet people, actually, we've left Matt the reason though. So I can tell you, it was on that calendar, on that. You can understand, I'm regional jail, but, but, uh, government don't give your button, because there's no mention of it. You know, we have some counties upset about it, and I had other counties calling, saying, don't give no money to us. Everybody can build their own. So it's, it's, it's an issue.
Yes. So my district, with most of rural districts, consolidation idea is not, not really support the force to consolidation. The, it's more populated of the counties that kind of push on that. As I said out there, it's like, why are we spending all this money on these little counties to compete? Well, you know how valuable it is to have, to have scenes and stuff. So it's, it's gonna be a contentious issue when it comes up. Generally, it's the more populated counties that push the consolidation idea. Now, point four is you could make, you know, mutually beneficial agreements with neighboring counties. Like if counties can do that and save money, we can do it and get things done. Probably a good idea to just start working on it. Be my thoughts on that.
At, at the end of the day, it really comes down to that, where we've seen more success with grants and number of those types of projects, larger investment projects. That's when neighboring counties have come together for a joint water program, joint sewer program, a joint whatever, you know, region, hill, whatever. Uh, those counties that were able to work around the road have just been a little more successful and qualified for some of those grants. So that's just something to keep in mind. Again, we're not encouraging, um, you know, to find a partner, but, you know, there are gonna be some scenarios that it just may make sense to visit some of your.
Just like things.
Example of what?
Our VSO.
Yeah. There, these are offices that, that, they're necessary, we're glad we have them. But can we justify a full-time employee? And we all know how hard it is, it is to keep a part-time employee.
Right.
You know, they don't have the benefits and whatever, and they're like, you know, I thought I wanted to do this job, but it takes a lot of my time and, and it isn't worth it to me. So, so some of these, like I said, this sharing the VSO with Hyde County and Ian with Buffalo County, I think is beneficial to both counties and, and helps, helps both counties save some money.
Right.
And currently in budget season and, and, well, I'll tell you what, every year it gets where each dollar is just a little smaller than it was before.
If it ever comes to the point where consolidation is forced upon counties, uh, by the state, we've gotta remember, counties are creatures of the state, not vice versa. Uh, they have all the legal authority in the world to say, this county is going to join that county. They can do that to us. If that happens here, I would rather see Hand County and Hyde County married than Hand County and Beale County married. I think Hand and Hyde is a perfect, uh, partnership. So much for that.
It'll be interesting to see what they come up with for incentives. You know, again, as of right now, when we look at county funding, your biggest expenses is the highway requirements. The roads are changing.
Yes.
Soliding towns. So, um, so where is a big financial savings? And that's, you know, again, there are going to be some, but, but it's not gonna be extreme. So that's why it'd be interesting to see what, uh, what the summer study turned up with some of those options.
Do you want, I want to expand on Jim's comment about if the state is the authority over the counties and the state says, this just isn't working, where you counties have to consolidate. Let's expand on that thought process where the state says, you counties have to consolidate to be more efficient. And then the federal government says, all right, some of these states just aren't pulling their own. We need to, we need to consolidate these states to make the federal government more efficient. And then we expand, and we expand that even further to a one world government where, where we say, you know that all these countries aren't efficient on now. Where, where do we start and stop? That, that authority or in government control?
Starts with the law's authority. The state is not the authority of the federal government, not the elevator.
Right, exactly.
That doesn't happen.
Can't happen.
Can't happen. Our state is organizing towns, and that's a triple down.
I, I think one of the, just a couple of all of those, that I would call major. But Senator Bryan said, we're, we're selling four counties and a part of Brown County. So, uh, we're big. They're already one of the, I think they might have run a muster, or maybe a little bigger.
Second biggest one.
We're big, here's a, here's a district out of Sioux Falls, a mile and a half by a mile and a half. They've been walking on Saturday, I mean, I can't even drive. Cars are going there.
Wow.
I can't put outside. So, the point of it is, eventually, we'll talk around us, maybe, we, we, maybe not. It's just one county. We got eight counties that we represent, but we also got eight sets of commissioners, eight auditors. You know, that, and, and we, we try to work on them. The other thing that Senator Bryan says, District Three, it really worked good as a team. You know, I think, and that's what's important, you know, it's just funny, they work really good with the team to, um, try to reach out, find out the problems, what they have, ready for his problems, even. And that's, we do work good with District Three too, so.
District Three is, I would mean.
Yeah.
Problem.
So, you gotta, gotta make sure your, at least the three representatives we got here are willing to, uh, that, that will help. Big time going forward. So you gotta make sure your at least the three representatives you've got here are working together, that that will help big time moving forward. And then I would love to mention Sergeant Brad was on appropriation and and correctness is, I was from that place. We enjoy you well. And it might also be in the legislature, I can see that. There is, it does make a difference if you're in that position. Pray for your, you have to don't get your gang into the Vermont and tell them others about leadership.
We have a pretty good background, but each one of us specialized in what our background is, and many of the teams had that massive, um, novel space to work on. So this this has been one of the early experiences we've had. Outside of the county thing, I was on a working group for Ford on the Eggland and we kind of came in with a board block, but we don't fetch for that. So he would uh. Off Defense Authorization Act where the farm bill has to pass, and you're gonna have some stuff from the federal level that will affect this Ford on the Eggland deal. We can't hold act on until we know the feds don't do because we don't start passing much laws and we may need to do something there if we're not all agreeable, so. We're just kind of holding back on Ford on the Eggland to bring it down until it comes up. The farm bill doesn't look like it's gonna pass this year, the Defense Authorization Act, I think they have to pass that one soon. The Romans had an amendment to it that that address the Ford on the Eggland, so we'll have some changes on that.
We don't want to take all of your time today, but are you have some challenges that you've experienced that uh you think that are uh legally that assistance can provide some support for?
One area I always think is we kind of get trapped on our reading tax dollars. You know, we have a lot of area, but yet we get some initial benefit, but ten years down the road, please. I guess distributed act and all of these things, I think it's kind of.
Yeah, I know they do the same thing as that on that's. This government do we gotta change the how a lot of police distributed and education? I can't believe more people that stand up and say, oh, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, and everybody sat there and now saying the same thing now.
The rural communities is supported at all, and it's on my flag against we get a chance to crack and then open funding for you again, we'll try to get that back.
We can choose it running around.
It's not it's not right that we're, you know, embracing it, taking it from ours and it's going down to places that don't.
There are a lot of places that don't like, I guess, I would probably go to where all that. So do you? We know, right? So anyway, the whole thing is we want green, we want power, we want solar, we want you guys to look down on your land, we want you guys to look at the big power lines, we want community access in Chicago. And as long as we're willing to do it and have the tax dollars for these urban areas, we're gonna allow them. We gotta try and get that back, yeah, for rural communities, for companies, whatever.
It all came about with the last school funding program that we had lost out, so we got a good representation of that. One other thing I'm kind of starting to work on out there is talking about energy, solar is an issue that's started coming up now. Was at the conference this summer, they're talking about blue use for land or solar, so you can use it for grazing, pollinator habitat, just any kind of habitat. And I'm talking at the state level with some of the other representatives about having regulations, can you see to acquire some kind of blue use? Comments are going to need to look into that personally, is probably not everything on on solar yet. No. So we're we're gonna get ahead of it, we fight from behind and we stick a lot of it. So that's one thing I'm trying to try to go after is look on, we integrate that blue blue use of land with solar and it's very beneficial, maybe one of us. Add and boost adverse to keep this up down.
That's all. Thank you for thought. Very good.
I want to say JD and Scott, thank you for serving Veterans Affairs. That Veterans Affairs is really important to me personally. These these are people that risk anything for whatever our government said thought was right, send them off to war. Whether you agreed with or didn't agree with that part, those people still stepped up.
My facility is up. Is the Reverend Furtis office in Evans County, she stuck on position. She served over in Iraq, later on. My dad was that she was a military crap. Like she got in her hook and sort of media actually in the Reverend Furtis office over there. Where like, so it's it's she's actually it's um doing a lot of business. She's out, she's up Vietnam vets, I think they're called frankly, a bunch of stuff now, but maybe she not, so she's a very good busy lady.
We had a we had a pretty active with that's the first lady that she did quite a few of those things here there. The great chairman, it's too nice, more like the office, and we've got the right people in the right place, we don't have to. I thought you could fill it. We didn't get we didn't get her into the line, we got we got some.
Oh, we had a really good uh police, police, they came on guard and two of us and he was in the circle, we had a lot of rep. I think I never served that one.
That's what I was.
So we got a lot of, we got some people to serve, some someone retired that was with us, so it's a nice match. Actually, I'm like, sir, if we're retired, Fred will tell me to be up. That's another lesson, you know. I don't know, we do that, that's all right, we do work to it.
Thank you.
Yeah, those retired guys that were going to say, yes, this is coming true.
Scott, are you aware of the fact that JD used to occupy his chair?
I didn't know that. He reminds everyone, oh, we get to talk about counties. You know, I used to serve on a county.
Well, again, you've got all of our email addresses and cell phone numbers, so feel free to reach out if anything comes up, but we appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
Thanks. Remember, these are happy. I have no idea what we're talking about. We had a we had a company later just a month. Maybe we should probably discuss consolidation. So we probably discussed the consolidation and then we did the removal of the county.
In the past, I just want to get a budget here in the right way. Okay, we're gonna skip down the budget here.
I should just put my stuff in the interview. Hopefully you guys have had a chance to look at this. If you have the ability to pull that up, Jim, you can bring your.
So I'm throwing my paperwork. But anyway, the way this starts out is, this is what's published in the newspaper. Of course, the columns represent within a fund each of the various expenses. So there's on Road Bridge, nine one one, we're expanding, so on and so on. The further you get to the right, the more likely you are to see that fund self-funded. So it has its own revenue source, it covers some expenditures. Only if it spends more than it receives does the county commission, then there's money from federal fund. So for the most part, everything you hear to the right is pretty much self-funded. It's really not worth spending a lot of time talking about it.
Those are more, right?
It's pretty scary. So let's work backwards, if you look at emergency management, emergency management is a shared function, so half of the payroll and benefits is made by the state, the rest is made by us. Now it is a combination of hand and muscle county funds that are providing it, so after the last meeting, there were changes to the budget. Produced this and reflected the changes of that income account. So the expenses changed, but the revenue also changed. Nine one one services should be on the right hand, but they put it in disorder. Nine one one still is funding itself because we have reserves, but the revenue is not matching expenditures. So we're gonna be spending almost reserves, a thousand bucks a year at some point, unless they raise the surcharge.
A general prediction of how that is solving?
If things continue on this path twenty years, so as long as we don't have a major mechanical failure, we have to go through a huge upgrade of equipment again. Uh, the Road Bridge Fund is off the chart here a little bit. The Road Bridge Fund doesn't have to be broke apart like this one does for transparency, because in effect, the Road Bridge Fund is also a road bridge department. And that's why you see a lot of detail offered there, and then you get down to. Yeah, it's not even on this page, but the bulk of detail is in the general fund. So when you look at the general fund, you look at, you kind of look at it this way now, what is the expenditures compared to the revenue? So that's what takes us to this sheet, which is a combination of expenditures up here and the revenues down here. So for example, if you look at the last two lines of this, one is, and that means finance, your revenue, and the other one is your appropriation, so those have to balance. To make them to balance, if you do not have a sufficient amount of funds coming in, which you pull out of cash and a closet. And so to make the general fund balance or general fund budget work, it assumes that one million forty-four thousand dollars will be killed over from one year to the end. So Dan did a little analysis of that. Would you say it's encouraging Dan or discouraging?
I would use this, yeah.
Of course. Same thing happens with the Road Bridge, you have your expenditures listed, and it needs finance, but you're short. If you had a good return on the Road Bridge Fund, Dan also didn't announce the Road Bridge Fund, which for the last how many years, he said a negative number. Two.
Two.
Because there isn't a carryover. The only carryovers in Road Bridge Fund are what we put into that general fund. So what I'm telling you is, is that you have to have at least one point eight, right? Two point eight.
Two.
Two.
Two point two nine.
Yes, two point two eight million dollars for the bank to fund that shit, but.
Which is in there?
Doesn't matter what's in there now.
Well, we gotta finish up the year, but. What is the quarter?
One point eight.
So for the now, what if what if you take, what you do in that study to take off the revenue?
The rest of what you budgeted for the year. That was sort of. I guess what I came up with all in was that it's doable, but it's extremely close. And we've never been close, we've always, our cash applied has always been that four hundred and eighty thousand in the general fund, and we've always had well over that. And well over that in the bank, so, I mean, from what I see it, unless I'm looking at it wrong, I mean, we're. We're max, I mean, we're gonna use our large portion of what our cash is, and we usually only use maybe thirty percent of what our cash reserves are.
What percent of our revenue is received by May first?
By May first? I have no idea, never.
Do we know what the division is? People do May first, we can, it's much later, not May.
Do you have a guess? A guess, how much revenue is coming in by May first?
Do most of the people pay for the entire year?
Some do, not a lot.
You write down only fifty percent collected, correct?
Quite a little bit.
About fifty fifty six percent, I think it was on the last.
Right.
So if I put on my economics teacher hat, the simple solution is you can approve this budget today, but you have to, have to, have to, have to, have to have to watch expenditures. Based on how much money you have in the bank. Include by the rest of this year. Yeah, definitely.
What would be what would be.
Wow, that's just like a model that would tell you that you should know that every month.
Tell us why.
You should know that every month. But you guys don't have access to my computer program at one.
Well, I say a friendly first.
Sure.
Oh, I'll say the margin.
Yeah.
How thin?
Yeah. Are we talking ten thousand dollars or a hundred thousand?
Well, no. I'd be sad, I'd. So.
It's hard to probably know.
It is, you don't know what your expenses are gonna be for a lot of the.
Right.
But uh.
Which case in America, hospice.
So, well, here's but here's what I think about it, so our cash balance, January first of this year was almost three million. Our cash balance, and this is all funds, um, no, that's not all funds, that's general fund. Balance is probably three million and then um in twenty-two, so previous year it was like two point three million. And in those two years, our budget shows us using that four hundred and eighty thousand of that to balance the budget. So roughly five hundred thousand, so, I mean, you're not even using that's, um, you know, twenty percent. So we're we're budgeting twenty percent of our cash reserves to get the bu- uh budget to balance. This year, we're going to be using probably upwards of eighty percent of.
Eighty percent.
Of what our proj- of of what our projected should be.
Not even the forty percent here, just the total carryover.
Just the total, so, I mean, it's a lot, like, it's. It's a substantial increase, and I don't, I haven't dug into it far enough to know exactly where the, I mean, it comes from our expenses going up, but they. From where those are added, I mean, probably had to have been careful that we were spending our one-time revenues that we got through COVID and all that on one-time expenses. Expenses, which it seems like we did, but I don't, maybe we have accrued more expenses, ongoing expenses. By using that money.
Well, we got inflation and eighty percent, you can't raise taxes more than three percent.
And so just like, just like in my homes, you you judge your expenditures based on the. And that's all I'm gonna tell you is that you can pass this today, it's upside down. But ultimately, because we're forecasting as far in the future, there's too many verdicts to say absolutely we can do this and all expenditures can fund. Your new revenue source, your only measure of control is expenses.
Is it part of that figured in there?
Sorry. No, I can't give it to you, totalize.
Spread the network though.
But you have to remember.
So don't go over anything, move, jump, or a bunch of stuff.
Well, you still have those traditional expenses that are built into it. So I mean, it's like when I come in and it's like, oh, yeah, you know what, by the way, I'd like to buy four million dollars of. What else? That's not gonna happen.
And the problem is, I mean, twenty-four, well, even if we approve this budget and everything goes up in a certain percentage of it, even if we go over by ten percent, it's fine, but. Then when we start looking at twenty-five, that's.
We have.
Then there's not, there's no cushion, there's absolutely no, we have to get. We have to take in almost a hundred percent revenue for a hundred percent of expenses.
We we are holders of the purse strings, taxpayers will hang us if we get carried away spending. We have to, we have to look at and understand our budget and make things balance balance acceptably, I would say.
I'm trying to think whether there are major savings to be had.
The biggest expense is obviously the Road Bridge. I mean, but. There's always so much you cannot do, I mean, you. You know, you look at their budget from the last few years, it's about, you know, just the supplies about half the budget anyway, they request half a million dollars, but that's just so much stuff that I know. I don't think that he's adding a whole bunch of stuff, it's just that expenses aren't that much. But here, when a third got up thirty percent in two years, pretty good.
On the topic of Road Bridge, I just have a question, Jeff, I drove across, um, was it two fifteen, Edwards Road? I drove across there going over by Max Corner the other day. Would you venture to say that that's our worst hour road? Because I should hope it is.
The surface that you said today, I'm ready.
The Edwards Road you did?
Edwards Road.
No, the Edwards Edwards Road. What part are you driving?
Going west, east or west?
West.
Oh, that's East Door. U M East.
Oh, that's East Door.
Wow. Yeah.
Store. East. What I'm putting the problem with doing, I have probably in the street, first one in the. Our worst road is back to the road where we're working now.
That that had gotten, I hadn't been down it for maybe a couple of years, and that had gotten really beat up, and like I said, I would certainly hope with budget type that that was our worst road. But I don't know that, I haven't driven.
Well, I would tell you, you guys down into it's really good, the roads are, some of the aids and the road without, you know, east.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're pretty good shape at Paul. All the block. Depending on what spring during, because this spring was really hard on the roads. That last mountain was solid out. And we're not the only county, all the other counties have the same thing. We're all fighting the same issue. Only come up with experience.
But as we discuss budget issues, I I s- I would hate to end up with any more of our county roads ground up and turned to an aggregate uh surface, you know. I've heard complaints from the people that said, what happened to the big roads we used to have, you know, why 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 haven't they been put back to oil or whatever? It's like.
Because all the guys who want semis, the semis, I mean, our roads weren't built for that.
Yep, and I and I tell people, I every time I said, I tell them it's an A and M problem, it's money and manpower, and if we had all the money, we could hire the manpower, but.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's it's always tough, and we we start talking about tight budgets and and roads that are already beat up. So we have tough decisions to make in the future of of an opt-out or whatever it might be, but. Stuff has to be maintained and covered somehow.
I also, the reason I just considered the reason I said, yeah, maybe when it's starting on this. We should not completely understand why sometimes, you guys said, well, that was the end of it, that's what you don't go back back here. So actually, it is that, well, another road, so, I mean, you know, we have to be mindful of our roads, how we treat our roads.
I can hand that conclusion that's drawn here, the budget will fail, there is two ninety-two, seven fifty-two in the May, covering expenditures at one point.
They do actually evaluate it monthly. Until you get past the first of the year, you can see what you're gonna carry over, then you get pretty frugal on it. And then in the coming months, you just keep an eye on it, and that's like Dan requested, that the revenues and expenditures be put on the agenda, and that's where you can see those trends. Because some months are more expensive than others, and some months we get more revenue than we. But part of the crutch on this one was like snow removal. We had an election that we weren't counting on, a very expensive election, considering the size of the land mass. There's just, you know, things come up.
Yeah, I just, well, we really wanna, he'd actually be able to do everything, but like I said, well, I mean. Yeah, I just, well, it really, I don't, you'd actually be able to do everything, but like I said, well, I mean, you know, we're looking through some of this was, you know, about fifty thousand dollars, the library, the requests, you know? Keep it in there maybe, but you'd say you can't do it until, you know, we get a little further into the year, it's like, well.
Well, I can tell you what's a valid, we don't have. First we came at the department and I went to the sheriff's office. And the sheriffs were like, as soon as that, that's your spending however you want. But then you listen to a legislative audit presentation, and they're like, what if there's no money? Because legislative audit, for the four years I've been doing this, it's like, if you don't have the governance, you should not have the expenses. That's the bottom line. So just because you approved a budget doesn't mean that that's the way it's gonna be. There has to be money there in order for you to do it.
Right. So you're saying that decision could be made later?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, you just have to look at it literally every month.
So month-to-month assessment would be very helpful.
Yep.
When a, when a, two commissioners being, being unofficial.
So you end up with the materialist agendas right now, so honestly, not really, there could be any confusion at any one time.
I think it's key, I've all been up for it all the time on this stuff. Not that I have.
So I mean, as far as the resolution goes, the resolution is what you see right there. It basically all the resolution does is it converts it to a resolution, sets up mail levies, which, when you look at the mail levies, they are they are hobbled by the fact that we have a three percent CPI, the application of growth in the county. And then we have the reduction of revenue for secondary roads, which should reflect the reduction of expense for secondary roads. And so that's where we're at.
What do we need to do today?
Well, if you're okay with being an eagle eye on expenses, we can approve the resolution today. If you want to figure out a cut and then add to it later, because you can always supplement in the future if you have the funds.
Well, if we don't have, we approved this today and we don't have the money to do a particular project like we're talking about, we just won't know it.
I, I would tell you that I think your peers and your constituents, people that analyze the records would say that if you commit to managing, then you're fine.
The deadline to approve our budget is October first.
Has to be appeared by October.
I think I recall, uh, before I was on this board in nineteen, that we were starting, what was starting budget in December, what? Is that not correct?
We can't come back and revisit it because the state found an error in it. Okay, because I didn't correct the levies with the third decimal.
Okay. I, I do recall that there was a lot of discussion about budget and right at the end of the year.
So there's, is there a process of amending the budget after?
You supplement it.
But it just be a supplement?
So for example, let's say that, that next year's an election year, so that automatically bumps up that expense. If, trying to think of a good example, let's say we don't have a primary, for example. That there's no contest to be voted on. Yeah, then of course the expenses will go down a lot. But if all of a sudden we have another special election, there will be an amount that's gonna need more money. So those are decisions that can be made at the time that they occur rather than forecasting them and hoping that they're gonna happen. Cause we did that last year with quite a few budgets, you know, where we cut back the amounts because we were speculating and we were always over speculating, so.
I guess, here's where I'm at on it. I think before we have put together here, again, I think we'd, we would go through this next year in twenty-four and be fine, but then we'd be really, the problem would be exacerbated come twenty-five, so I, I think today we're at a point where not that we need to be cutting projects and cutting budgets, but I think they need to be scrutinized more than just getting, giving a rubber stamp and I was hoping to have, sit down with certain departments and kind of go, I don't know if we need to go through it line by line, and we're certainly not gonna go through it line by line sitting here. But just to, you know, make sure that everybody's really thinking about, so that's really what a budget is, at least in my eyes, is making sure everybody just is thinking about what they're spending and it's not just, I mean, these, a lot of us don't write the checks, so you don't see the money going in and going out, so if, I think we need to really set an expectation that, hey, I mean, we're not in any bind right now, but if we think about this ahead of time, then we can keep ourselves from being in a bind a year down the road. And so I, as I said here, I, I mean, I would like to put some more effort into it before we actually approve something.
I, I would too, I, I agree with that completely. I've, I've looked it over quite a bit, but, um, maybe writing in and out in that number here and there, um, to make things ins and outs.
Right, it's not the way those in there do, whatever that project was gonna.
That was, that's, that should be for this year.
Oh, that is the should be.
But I mean, that is something, I don't know, for those, I mean, he's got sixty thousand dollars for next year's capital improvement for this building, I mean, that very well, we could need that, but I just, I think we probably should have answers on what that actually is and, you know, could that sixty be forty and you start adding up twenty thousand dollars here and ten thousand dollars there and then.
You can.
Yeah, it does.
We sold the water since. Well, can we, but then, we don't have to make decisions today, right?
Well, we can do it away, either approve the resolution or you set the next date before they make a run.
I think we should approve it, and then I think we ought to do exactly what you're saying. Damn. For next year. And I think.
Right, you're right.
Greg, you said if we don't have money, we can't spend, just that simple?
But if we, if we approve this resolution, there's really not a lot we can do as far as if you want make some adjustments in the budget. You, you would just, I, and you're talking, the only place we would be able to make adjustments in the budget is only, um, spend such as wages and that, we wouldn't have any possibility of.
No, but you, like, let's say that you see that my budget is starting to get to the margin. Then you would say, Doug, you need to control your spending, and if you don't, we will. It's just that simple.
We can change the budget if we need.
Yeah, so, well, you can, and that's, a lot of people like, except when I was first a doctor, you're like, well, they can't change it, you can. You can take money out of my budget and stick it in somebody else's.
Yeah, I mean, your budget is a formality when it comes down to it, I just, I mean, I just think that there, I mean, some thought should be put into it on the basis of setting expectations for everybody that, you know, you're not held to this one hundred percent, but this is what we expect should happen and you should make every effort to make it happen and to be under.
I agree with that statement of setting expectations, because we, we get a lot of surprise, surprise expenses and, and so, sometimes they're minor, sometimes they're tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars and those, those things, when it gets down to, um, tight numbers, just aren't acceptable. They're not acceptable for reasonable tax dollar management, I don't think.
Well, unless they are surpriseable. Of course, a disaster is.
Yeah, I, yeah.
What do you do?
As I asked, the, the revenue side and the real access infrastructure revenue? What's the?
The highlighting?
Why is it? Two ninety-five, that's seventy-five.
That's similar to this stuff. T here.
Yeah.
Because this originally was just a copycat of what took place back over here.
Yeah.
And that wasn't realistic. It's more realistic.
This is what we're gonna, we think we're gonna get.
Well, this, this comes from the state.
Right.
And then we go it on to the township.
Township.
Right. And so quite honestly, it matters if you want to, if it's on the right-hand side, you can only spend a few funds, of course, you don't have a choice.
Well, but I, for some reason, I thought we actually were getting more than that this year, we all applied instead of you. But we're, we're not. We don't really know.
No, but even if we do, you could just add to it.
Yeah, most of the, yeah, I was just curious, how that was arrived or why that was ever.
Cause I'm, I'm not, I think the first year we were gonna receive more than the couple of years we all should be fairly consistent.
And so like JD even touched on, where they talked about increasing the amounts that are allocated for that statewide, but they weren't gonna do it through raising taxes, so it's only based on funds that are there.
So what, how do the states need to raise taxes? They're gonna raise enough to do it.
They're gonna.
They're gonna raise enough to do it.
I believe that is a very correct decision.
I mean, they're too chicken to raise taxes, so they're gonna, they're gonna make the counties raise taxes.
And I'm gonna editorialize, so, this does not reflect the feelings of the board. But Governor Jankel did this for school districts, why do you consolidate school districts if they want to themselves? You make it so they can't fund it themselves, and they're never looking elsewhere. And that's probably the consensus with this governor, Jankel also wanted to consolidate counties. Same way, nineteen ninety-six or seven, state of the judiciary wrote a book explaining where they saw the judicial system going in coming years. And it was well-defined, and I have a copy of it. And it said that there will be thirteen mega counties serviced by thirteen court systems. Everything was just all the way down. And I think that that playbook still exists. In a better term.
Good editorial.
Do you remember that?
Yes.
So yes. Pro people are a lot more compliant than they're.
I think I would move that we advance the budget as opposed to cover that with, uh, a directive or a request from the auditor to provide us with all three budget figures. So if there's something that we need to immediately react to, we can.
Right. Cause like I said, the biggest, the first next biggest hurdle is what we do with carryover, and then we'll know a lot better where we're at. If our carryover is less than that amount, then you know what has to happen.
Really, there isn't a lot of massage to do here. There is, you know? The discretionary spending is pretty minimal.
I mean, I do think there is probably some, like, if you look at our, just take the top line on, um, our expenditure budget, so our contingency, county contingency, or commissioner contingency budget is a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I thought it was two hundred.
Two twenty.
Well, it's two twenty-five with the, of course, a hundred, I think we leave a hundred because after we, we already discussed that and that's the number we came to, but a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I mean, you start changing a hundred and twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand, there's twenty-five thousand, like I said, I've, I've swept through this and you find five thousand dollars here and ten thousand dollars there, I mean, you can come up with a couple hundred or a quarter of a million dollars worth of things that maybe not all of them, there may be completely justified reasons why the expenses needed to be increased, but I, I don't, I just, I should, probably should have, or I should have had these conversations before we got to this point, but I, I don't know, I'm still at the point where I think we should probably have those conversations with department heads before we just rubber stamp those.
I understand, we're, we're pointing, I believe. When I look at that a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollar contingency fund as worst-case scenario, highly unlikely that it's gonna get spent, all of them. That's to cover us in case, we're small, in the case of absolutely unpredictable, almost catastrophic levels of expenses. I know two hundred thousand dollars.
No, we're not, we're not protecting ourselves in any way, we can always go over budget on any, on anything.
Well, we can't.
I would, if, if we're in a, if we're in an extraordinary circumstance, I would rather be over budget at that point than being in the extraordinary circumstances of the under, under budget.
I agree, that's why I think we should approve it, even though it looks like we're over budgeting in some areas. It may look like that to some people. But I still see, even if it's a golden budget, its worst-case scenario is to cover us in the event. At least we have it accounted for.
Yeah.
Right, cause in the old days, there used to be budget ordinances. Were basically effective law, they had to follow, and so, there was a shift in that, so, cause the resolution needs flexibility to change.
I'm not saying, Dan, like, our budget was loaded at all.
No, I'm just saying that I, I think at this point, I, I don't know if this will help so to, again, the, the cash balance that we use to balance the budget, so basically revenues minus expenses and then whatever deficit we have, we, we fix with the cash balance. In the road and bridge fund, being it's a separate fund for the last, which is probably goes back beyond this, but since twenty twenty, that number has been a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-one, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-two, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-three, looks like it's gonna be a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, or it was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, budget that. For the budget year twenty-four, in order for us, for us to balance that budget, it has to be one point two four seven million dollars.
So that budget should have been climbing.
Yeah, and Dan brought that to light, was it earlier this year?
Yeah.
You know, and that was just the instruction, and that's just the number of years, but it led to a false conclusion.
So then, yeah, so we've been, we've been flat over those, however many past years it's been, and now we're gonna have almost a ten X um, increase in that line to balance the budget, I just think that, I'm not saying that that's so that, I mean, that's the reality of the situation, I just think it requires some scrutinization of.
The numbers should be closer to.
I would love the.
Yeah. The, the, the projected amount of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand and the actual amount wasn't always the same, was it?
Not.
But we, because every year we've supplemented the highway department, some, sometimes.
But some of it's by design.
Yeah, some, a few years ago, I remember it was nine hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year, you know? Need things balanced, but, but, um.
Yeah, and that hundred, that just, I mean, that number is sort of fictitious in the fact that we put it at the road and bridge fund that a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and I put it in the general fund as former eighty thousand, but we've always had way more than that in the cash fund. Um, so in reality, that number was a lot bigger and the end of the year with still money in bank. So, I mean, it's not an exact.
Are we using those numbers because the state numbers are unpredictable?
No, that's just, that's what I was going to do.
I mean, I understand why, I understand why you'd use the same ones, cause then you get to see actually what your revenues have been increased and actually what your expenditures have been.
There is something that we're not mentioning, that's on the budget prep, but ultimately, when you look at this, each year, this number was what was spat. Not what was on the sheet, that sheet just didn't get changed. Well, after visiting with Dan, it's apparent that we need to make sure that that gets changed to the right.
I kind of think we wait and we need a few days of other personnel.
I guess, in my position, is I'd ask for consensus of the board, should we approve it today or should we?
We have a motion already.
Should we wait a motion or not?
Without withdrawing, there's no consensus. The only thing is, it doesn't have to be published, but I have a report to.
It's already been published.
Oh, this is the one that was published, okay. Okay.
Yes, because of this particular season, if we wait till here, that's not a lot of time for me. So honestly, it could be better if it was.
If it was like?
The nineteen.
Oh, just like.
Cause we have conference next month, so that takes three workdays out of mine.
Yeah, and that would be perfectly fine if man, uh, nothing we something.
The nineteen.
And then, do you think we need to?
I'll draw my motion.
Erase it?
Yeah, look at it, schedule it.
So we can do it anytime, uh, the weekend, the eighth, anywhere. It's very, very serious.
Yeah, cause the conference. Yeah, because the conference.
Would you just do that day, the nineteenth?
You don't want to do it the nineteenth?
Okay, you mean that, yes.
Do you want to do it? Day or evening?
Well, depends on when you want to do it again.
Now that's the other thing.
If we do it in the evening, I just do not do it the nineteenth, without getting voted, but.
Eighteenth to twentieth or?
Whatever, whatever work.
Well, I need to be there there or another day, ideally.
I, I have a document appointment in Sioux Falls on the morning of the nineteenth, so I would be back for an evening meeting, probably not before. Or three o'clock.
Yeah, she did it the day, they got.
Just to assume not to do it the day.
Yeah, because you avoid it. How about the twenty-eighth to twenty-first, or is that twenty?
Twentieth, the Wednesday?
Yeah.
Second fast. We set it all together again.
Okay.
We can stand that together again.
I was, uh, twenty-first, uh, for the game, in the evening.
Twenty-first?
Yeah, because the twentieth seems like it's not going to work. Okay, can we all decide on whether we want to do it in the evening? Or do you want to do it during the day? The only thing is, if you're thinking of, of talking to, making some big changes in some departments, uh, day would probably be easier to get the department goes here.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm making.
Yeah.
I was not.
Calendar looks here.
Is that something we could work on when we get back? Or we got to do it the week of the eighteenth through the twenty-second?
It'd be better if we just decided, I think, or if it's good.
I just need to publish a notice, so I just need to have it, I think, clearly by Saturday.
He's taking that more.
It's a, it's an annual appointment, it's in their schedule, six months, half, twenty, to try to move it. I'm not opposed to send it.
You can, you've been signing this, that's how it happened, this day. We've been signing this, and if we want to make changes up to you send it, we can make changes. Yes, even though we signed this, we can make changes.
Yes. Because ultimately, you guys can say, we can't afford to do this, taking it off the board.
So with your talk, and we can, you could sign that, and we could still just throw that one away and sign a new one?
Or you can make adjustments to this, and he sends it to his K, right?
Right, because it's, it's no longer an ordinance, it's not a law, so it doesn't have the rigidity, but it used. I think some cities.
But that resolution has, doesn't it have numbers on it?
Yeah, we can't change the resolution regardless.
So what is that, that's the resolution?
Yep. Because the state cap, the three percent CPI growth, that is that number.
Right, that makes sense.
So it's, it's amount of where we check a Monday or hour.
Hit the Wednesday. What's, what's, what's the, the, the? We'll, 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 hour.
Are you done by you? We'll start at seven.
Go for more than an hour?
Oh, I'm done by eight, yes.
We do a day, or I don't know what you got, what do you got?
Do you have that up here?
But could we go before five?
Sure.
With hour? Hopefully, I'm not going to tell my wife my wife.
Or when you do it after, I'm hoping on a date Wednesday.
Well, you got Wednesday, and you're not, not, it's kind of a different time.
What's that?
So that was ten.
That's a good thing.
Our wife usually has meetings before I work, and I work. Just don't look like you can.
Just lock the door.
Yeah, if you want to do it at seven o'clock Wednesday, I can do that.
Well, I never, but I still know how long it's going to take. You, I see where you require practicing.
No, 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 forget my part.
If we, if we start over with work.
Okay, seven o'clock.
Six, six.
Let's do seven.
Seven. Okay, any other questions? This is the twentieth of September at seven P M.
I would suggest, since we put this out, that I'll come back with something of a recommendation.
Yeah.
I just, I mean, when are we going to make adjustments?
Does Jack's taking that brief break? I was reading the public hearing. Are you looking for your spring too?
Yes, I am.
It's actually almost comical, but. Actually, it's comical that you didn't wear it. That's like when the videos, when the videos were.
It's a great topic, you know, right up to five, I mean, it should be like.
Okay, if, 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 if they're running away late, I got a meeting at seven. That just kind of did it, and it'll be a bit of a people photo if you need to.
Oh, I intuition. Yeah, you.
So it's not, it's not. That's the most of the questions.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
So I was, I just said. I mean, if you're talking about, I mean, over twenty thousand dollars on the other. So, is that more, or is that the second? Yeah. I don't know, yeah, it's a, beyond the free.
It's here, yeah. Watch, yeah.
Let me see most part, like sheriffs, obviously, but I think, I mean, that's, that's the other thing that I wondered if we could start putting in like a line for just full-time employees, or not, if the wages go up, that's because the, our headcount went up or something, or down or something like that. That's what I was going to do, some equalization, maybe, I guess. That's when we're substantially down.
Or else, because they got a, what is that, two people.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's right. So that, yeah, I was close to one fifty down to ninety.
We need to do that one whole bunch of lines.
Because really, you know, they have a part of each other, and every time the chief, you know, that upper part, there's not much you can do about that. It's all stuff down there.
Right.
Well, it's also, I mean, it's, yes. One thing that's fairly, once you, I mean, it's a very predictable thing, but then also it's a very, we said in stone things. We get into a situation, um, we get into a situation of having to opt out, and we attach courage to that, and then we're in a pickle. And then we're in a pickle.
Did you say, yeah, I can start, I don't think that you knew it that far, and you got a, there was a time and a number.
I don't, I don't know.
You guys. That, uh, sales tax, we've run for a historic place for those kinds of traditional experiments. The application must be made by.
Done, did you get your more checks out there?
By us, right. So, but we're going to keep some of that down, so I don't know about that. It's probably as big as the last one, you know.
Is it?
First time. Well, just here. Thanks. Damn, oh, man, go fly, that's all. We didn't listen before. Guys, can we, don't we expect a program?
Sorry, um, I insist that you do a formal request for me to go to my continued, continued education. School is this month, this one September seventeenth through the twenty-second. And I'll be taking a residential appraisal class that week.
Do you need motion or consensus?
Consensus. Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Later, May. Brad? Okay, so my name is Brad Stanger, and, um, I'm a local friendly engineer. But I have, I'm, I'm assuming you're here for the hearing. I just have a little sign-in roster, which helps me with who y'all are, and, and, and I, and I, you know, I'm asking for your E D I R S or cell number. Just in case you have a question that I have to look up, I could get it shipped back to you. And this is, you know, this is also a department for the D O T, and when you say D O T, it implies that I'm specific on the results. I'm just going to start this, so I'll, so I'll, just, 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 just add on that. Someone say can add? And then minus bike contact is right on the top, so we can, okay, picture that as your wire, or you can do that whole thing. And you can always ask the officer.
They just told me two minutes ago they weren't going here for this.
Okay.
Uh, the legislators.
So, we moved on, we got locked, but yeah, are we, are we, they all, okay, then, then, one you had a, especially you had it up just a second ago. All right, I, I think what I would like to do, unless there's other questions, I'm just going to hit this. So what this is, and I have a, I'm here for the pass around, this is just the changes from last year. So, you know, so there was a lot of changes from two thousand twenty-three, it was a long run. This project right here at the top, that was, that's on, um, Green Valley Road. We got a local federal grant for that, so that one's moving in two thousand twenty-seven, and we will, uh, that's where I'm thinking that'll be built. Um, that one is already made in the Dallas, it's already sized and ready to go. Um, I just, I, I just, I get a work order from the D O T, no match on that one, and we'll, and we'll just, and we'll get that, that one going. The ones you see down here that say big P E grant, so we're pretty successful this year, without aisle. Um, the ones that say in design, the ones that say in design, those are the ones we won. So we won nine big P E grants, so we don't have, what happened, there won't be many more to apply for for a while. Um, we did get one other local federal, that's the second one down. So, and what happened is, we applied for both a local federal and the big P E, with the idea of that have local federal, because that's no match. Everybody wanted them as two, so we got a couple, we got one of the most. Um, and the rest of them, we'll go into, basically, what I, what I do then now is, I figure out how big they look. Most of them, I don't think any of these will be and not be able to box cover, I just figured out how big they'll box cover. How, what angles, those kind of things. So that's what we do on these, so.
That's an eighty-twenty, isn't it?
Those are eighty-twenty.
I have a question for Brad and Dunberg, if these, but these are only twenty twenty-four projects.
Okay, they say twenty twenty-four because of the design. And then I will, once, once we get them done, then we'll apply for a big replacement project. And, um, so if you're asking, we get the twenty percent, they'll. And, um, so if you're asking, will you get the twenty percent bill on this year? No.
Okay, that, that was my, I suppose whether there's revenue in the, well, there's a, there's a sunset of when they have to be done.
Yeah, we, we got three years to do them. Um, we'll try to get most of this done, that's a lot of them. That's what I can say. So I'll do, do my best. And then what happens is once you get them done, you apply for a replacement grant. Now, this year they had the local federal and, and the big, and we'll do that. I, I anticipate we'll have a local federal and we'll apply for all that we can and then we'll reel in and, 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 and pick several. Do apply for a big P E, but that's eighty twenty. Just, just to kind of, so we keep them processed, so we're doing some every year, so it's not just we don't stack them. Now, that, that's all score, so there's no guarantees when we can get that. That's the hard part about the, the big grants are, I have to put the limbed five year plan. With no idea whether we're gonna get it or not, but that's the rules of the story. Any questions on, in, in, in that? Um, I didn't turn my back yet, so, but, but, so that's, that's what we got going on. Um, and you see this, these next changes? Those are the ones that we did previously, but all sitting in the D O T way for them to get environmental clearances in the life. I think we got a couple railways assigned that, that, that are coming in. That's not living off anything yet, though. Um, I, I did some poking around and it looked like there was one of those that was in the next six months to bid. The D O T does that, they, they say, here's our schedule ones, here's the ones we think in the next six months. And one of them is on there. I expected most of these to go looking next month. This time of year next year. Yeah, that, and that's why I moved into two thousand twenty five. That's when I think most of those will fall. And those are local federal.
I like those.
Yeah, we like those, yeah.
Definitely, we do more.
And, um, I, I brought a paper copy of you guys' paper, that's, um, that's, that's the same paper again there. And then the next of them, and that's just the final five year plan with the next of them. But, I mean, I can look at what you'd like, but the, the first sheet was the Reader's Digest version of everything is the same from last year except for what I brought there.
Why do you think yours is the same across twenty four to twenty eight? I'm always about.
Because that's the best forecast we, you know. We could guess more with the D O T, but isn't a thing enough for that. So I think that's, that's, that's straight from Doug and that's the order. I think if you have a safe side, you don't overestimate.
It's forecasting zero growth in revenue.
Expenses are there, expenses goes up.
Cam? No, sorry.
Keep going, Brad? We, 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 we can, um, and so that's the funny sheet and then, and then, and right after the funny sheet that's, that is what we do that with the changes. So, like I said, I'm happy we can go through and, and as much as the promoter is willing, is with life, but, um, in, in, in a nutshell, that very first sheet, the highlights of changes was, this is two thousand twenty four. Um, from last year, you know, we added, I added in the these, these big, I had added, you know, it required me in there. So I added in these, these big projects that, that we're going to go and out much.
What is?
Answer the question?
Absolutely, anytime.
Go back down, the, on that one that, uh, was, no, go up. Go, no, down, just a little bit, about halfway through the page. We had one there that was, uh, four miles south of Denver and two point nine miles west.
Where was that one?
Where's the top of the page? Like that?
Right there. Where is that one at?
Okay. I get some really, John, you.
I don't have to get off. Four miles north. That was. Yeah, two point nine miles is south of Max Argent, this place. Is it that bridge or where it is?
And, and this is colorized, these are only the bridges.
When is that one planning on getting done?
Now, we're doing, we're doing some engineering this year and then we have to go back again next year and apply for some more money. So, I don't, I can't ask that.
Can I ask why, if it's, if it's on a township border, okay, why are not both townships notified about it? Because that puts the townships in a bind on their budgets.
No, there's no binding. This is, this is, okay, 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 okay.
Isn't that an eighty twenty?
Yeah, it is an eighty twenty.
So the townships are ten percent viable, right?
Or do we have to do that? I think, if, if, if it's eighty twenty, eighty percent common, twenty twenty percent common and eighty percent.
I think he's thinking they're relaxing.
That, that's right, that's right funding, we're not talking, we're.
Yeah, this, this is a, a program, so when I say eighty twenty.
The finance.
Yeah, no, 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 but it's good because I'm sure that you're not going to want this.
This is bridge improvement grant. This is what that wins, full tax money those do.
So these are bridges over twenty feet and they're over twenty feet. There's counties, so. It might be on your own, but the bridge is a county.
I like the little major bridge.
Somebody left it in the, I, I'll tell you what I did to do, just went in there and and, uh, now I should say, I did that. There, I, I checked most of those, there, the schools over, but I got a laser. You want a background or what? If it's over twenty, you can take care of it.
Yeah, if that one qualifies, then we got everyone who should qualify and then if they don't.
If if, if we have, this is not before where some had been missed, I've had other counties where no, ever looked at the bridge ever and there it is.
Well, we've got a couple on our account.
You might, you might. Now, you know, it's a button, it's a button, not so it's inside the inside, not outside the outside, and that would make some, a bunch. Have me look at them, you can look up and give me the directions. I'll go there.
Well, Jeff was out of the way, looked at one of ours and that bridge has never, ever been inspected by the state.
No, probably not.
Yeah, if they're under twenty feet, I don't look at them. First. If, now you, if I want to look at them, I will, but you need to be mentally prepared for.
I know what you'd say.
Whenever I'm. But I, I, I'm not for others, and I'll, we, we're even happy to if you got one, you think this one, if you think they're crazy, I, I, you know, I got a little room in, a little laser, and it's pretty accurate and very quick, so I'm happy to do that with a lot of people. But that was what I said, really good question, but I do.
Right, I've got a question, these bridges, when, when we did that determination of small structures in the county, they weren't, they weren't really inspected or measured? They were just?
I, I should say they weren't, so they were measured up and they were given those little manuals, so they're given to the third. Here's what I didn't do. I didn't go under there and, like I say, you got a little steel street bridge. I didn't go under there and run the numbers and hope. Because that was guilty. That's a, that's a separate side. But I will. It, it needs to know that, but, but, but they, they were given ratings and some of them were marked that they thought, I, I, one of my guys did that, so I did, they thought it needed me to look at it. Um, I need to be three million back, but I hear a lot, so if that one, I'm gonna look at it, just let Jeff know, I'll, next time I'm doing them, I'll zoom by there.
What is O T T O C?
Auto seal?
Yeah.
Um, that is.
That's fair enough.
I, he's asking about the auto seal.
Hopefully, I have to still go put a heavy shower gel on before we turn roads that we build up back in oil.
Is that unusual to do that?
No, we do a lot of it. Yeah, a lot of it. Over here, we have.
Oh, kind of like a chip seal of gravel, a certain chip.
Dude, it's big rock, it's a heavy shot of oil on the big rock. This process, yeah, and everything that we ground up last before, we started grinding roads in twenty thirteen, we ground up a hundred mile road in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, and then I'll go back to oil and put an auto seal on.
I heard the term before.
Okay, yeah.
Any questions? A, a, any other five year plans, questions? All right. Well, I think maybe what we could do is and, and, and I'm, I'm asking, not telling, but close the hearing and then, um, I have one little short couple photos. Um, I'm also, with the D O T, I inspect the bridges and the D O T wants me to brief you guys on what I see. So I did, do no wrong PowerPoint, I just got a couple of them that you might want to look at, and I just did it in the hand.
Brad, I think, I think I can speak for this board when we say we don't like when you circle in his pictures of bridges.
Yeah, right, no, because he was, I don't, I don't take pictures with a good stock.
You've got my assist, Brad.
Yeah, very solid business. So, anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll get a couple shots. I'll let you watch him do it, bro. Oh, how they play.
Second.
I was there, I, I, I was. Very nice. So then, so by the time I get home, I will email, there's a little form that, to sign and attest to. And I, I'll, if you can just get that signed and attested, I'll take it from there, turn it into the D O T, because that's good. Very good. So, I passed this first one around, this one, um, I got a structure number, but, um, this is the end rhyming culverts, but it's hard to see, they have a hole those way under the road, so we're gonna clean that one out. Basically, we got I'm just afraid, you know, we tried to go over and it caved in, so we need to just excavate out and repack it.
So it's bended?
I don't know if that's dropped out yet. Um, that's, that's the, the series of pipes.
Oh, there's nothing.
Yeah, yeah, so, so this is why we get in there. Every time water comes in there, that's gonna get worse. And it's, it's undermining and undermining more and more on people. And then I have another, there's a little pile, looks like we had some ice come. It wasn't there two years ago and now it is. And, um, we got steel piles on the front, on the upstream side, and that's on the downstream side, so evidently an iceberg came down both downstream side, which is not, not even know what, that it happened.
A lot of icebergs came down now.
Yeah.
That was, I think, that the feed has been covered, so we, Brad read a recommendation on that to give a feed.
He's only recovered this two.
So, and that one, we were thinking, it's hard for me to look at a few of these, especially up in that, the northeast corner. Last time I did them, I walked them though. This year, when I went out, the water is eight feet deep. And, and it's so, so, so high that I can't get my, you know, I got a kayak sometimes, I use it, like, I can't get under it. But there's not a headroom, so I do the best that I could. And I look at them again, and if water goes down, but that's why the bridge would be standing on the river, that's the best I could do with what I do at the time.
It isn't very photogenic, is it?
No, I mean, no, it's, let us bust it out and I was just kind of dense, so you understood, though. So, al- otherwise, I'll look the other thirty mile road straight forward. That, that's a break for us, your recommendations, that we'll, we'll go through, but there, so some will come down, but we expect it to happen.
How many, how many of our bridges do we have an issue, or, or mainly we have an issue with? Like that one north of St. Lawrence last year that finally the water got pumped out from under it, so you could get a good look and the piling's been all hanging.
I, hopefully, hopefully not too many, no, I, 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 pretty, pretty safe to say, buddy. If I had gotten under them all, um, how, I could get under this, there's one we got some busted up, I was too. It, it's, it's too deep, it's, it's sometimes I'll I, I, you know, I don't know with my weight, I'll feel it with my feet, but like, this is way over my head, I couldn't get under it. So, uh, okay, I don't have a, you have a winner, but, but yeah, we, hopefully it was on. Now, I got under them all now. Now I'm on the second cycle of inspections on all your bridges, so unless it hap, you know, happens in a two year period, but, and that one didn't, that one's been I think it's been, it was dangling there for a long time. So, we shouldn't see it.
I feel like we got really lucky with that one.
That, 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 that was a concrete slab bridge, which we have several of and, and we like because they are they're like a Sherman tank, they're ultra durable, but that say is not. Big time. That event went into those street bridges over there. One, one goal without it, without it. Okay, so that's the first inspection, any other? One here. You, you guys through, you got any?
Is this the time to ask for the bridges that are under twenty feet? For our township stuff?
That's just a warrant, isn't it? At least it could range. It's about time we had Jenny Jeff.
Okay, well, that, that's, that's really what I have, that. We'll, we'll, I'll get that five year plan filed off with the D O T. We have to move it up here, because the I take care of this, so that's we'll get that, it's new up over fifteen, but I'll look at that, that form of sign, it's the last piece of paper that I need, we'll have to get that signed. Okay, thank you. Is that also a requirement as a well, I, I'll take care of it. We got to stand up here. So we open up for, uh, in case.
We're doing the five year plan now?
Yeah.
You got a question on the rate?
We have, we have one bridge left in the township, and I'm sure it's under the twenty feet. It's on a, it's down there by Collins Lou, it's on a road that isn't traveled very heavily, but maybe by hundreds of, but picked up ten, um.
Is it a, is it a maintained road?
It, it is not. Whether, if I understand right, since it has a bridge on it, maybe it should be.
Have you thought about vacation?
Well, we're kind of just checking into our options. If we need to sign it, close it, just close the bridge, close the section line, what are, what are all the the options? I mean, there's farm ground all the way around it, it appears to me, and I had a talk with the farmers, that they probably bringing part things towards north or south, so they aren't driving trucks or trucks. But, uh, I guess you need some help to know what we should do with that bridge and what all the options are.
I, I think one of the requirements for us to approve, uh, rate money is it has to be a, uh, for service maintained road. We, we can't even approve rate money for a, uh, minimum maintenance road, is that, that's correct, I think.
It's got the full maintenance. Travel.
So, and, and all right, we don't get any help with money that way, um, and that's fine. Do we, what options do we have? Can we remove the bridge and make like a rock creek crossing? That you can at least get across a picker? Do we use something and call it a minimum maintenance road and?
If it's not used much at all, if you just say that it is, uh, closed.
I mean.
If you don't want to make it.
Or, or, uh, put up the my opinion, put up the no maintenance, travel not advised signs is, is, I think what the recommendation is for signage.
I, I can make the office a little bit, so. This isn't the first one that I've done for four hours. So, when they start to become like that, and you go, hey, me, there's almost So, when they start to become like that, and you go, every, it's almost always my recommendation that. If it's gravel, and everyone's afraid to drive it in car over it now, you, you, now, there's, there's a process, we did this year over meeting, you close that bridge. Without, without vacating the right way, you close that bridge. Now, again, there's a process for vacating the road, turning it over to landowners and so on, um. Usually, that's not something that, that we, we like to talk about, because people still have to get in and off to the side. So, so usually, only if it's an obvious big pasture that nobody, and one contiguous piece of, you know what I mean? I wouldn't vacate the right way, it wouldn't be, you know, this is not, you talk to us, dude, but I wouldn't vacate the right way. And I think how I come to look at it is, if you're bringing it here, probably, close the bridge. Um, now, when you close the bridge, there's some signs, barricades, all that is, closed, like. Drive steel fence posts into the ground, put it across so you can't get over. Someone will, if you can get around it, they will go around, um, and then, I always like. Whip out, whip out, now with the rock crossing, you could. I see that a lot, I've, I've, I've seen some of the ones that we have, where it looks, it looks to me like the, the bridge was in there once, and whip it out, put it in a rock crossing, and. No bridge, and you suck in a rock crossing, that's. Now, probably the first, we would put in that bridge, whip it out, so, so, so there are folks who used to see that one there. So we'll sign, put, put some signs up, and I can help with that, until we, like, you put in a rock crossing, the little sign you put on, they don't matter. Stand one, on each end. With, with some warning signs on the bridge, you know, right now. But I always, I always advocate for, if it's in bad shape, and you, and people aren't using it, and you're not thinking of easy replacement, whip out. Because while they're standing there, even when they're barricaded off, you're watching, you're, you're, I want to settle the problems. Goes way down, the bridge is ripped out, that this bridge is still standing there, with barricades on. That helps, but yeah.
If you have time to help us.
And I, and I, and I will, um. Here's what I, I was going to talk. Close.
I was just gonna say, we can't have that situation on our project, and we just need to, uh, both post at the bridge site on both sides. And we posted the sign on the journey, and so we got you fixed, but ours looks a very deep, deep, I don't know how deep it is, we did that on our.
Now, rock crossing, really.
Signage is very important.
No, I, 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 I put that right out of work, I, I, I will, I can look it right out of work, and, and I can make a list, um. Sometimes, you know, Jeff can help with, where to get them out. There's a couple of companies that run D Smith, that I think they still like to, I think you need to get the signs from D Smith. A lot of times I'll ship them to, job, but then you get them.
But this, but this way would be at a cost to the township, correct, the signage itself?
Yeah, yeah, whoever has to pay the bill, that, 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 so, so I got, I got to be useful to pay the bill.
There seems to be a little sense of confusion on the five-year plan, since we've asked all of you to make a five-year plan for the rate program, the, the rural infrastructure grant. This is the county's plan, county's five-year plan, you guys, each township is gonna have their own five-year plan for that rate program. We are the big program for the larger bridges, so there's a separation there, if anybody's confused on that aspect. Um, we do have some rural manuals here for small structures. To help you identify what's a small structure.
That's the same one I have when I was talking about, how we call them, right out of the book.
Lot of good information in it, if you guys want one, take one, so, those are available for you as well, and. I've been learning all about all this once, so, you know, good. So hopefully, we can help you guys qualify for some money to get, get stuff to snuff in the townships as well.
Jeff, can you explain the process of a big project from day one on a bridge that's not qualified for the county taking responsibility?
Okay, so there's a, first of all, you gotta make your requirements, it has to be on fully maintained road. It, uh, has to be sixteen square foot, an autograph to a twenty-foot bridge. Anything over twenty foot is a common, and it's been claimed there, but it's considered a small structure. And there's deadlines, you have to be August thirty-first, that's the first I've identified here. Now you got next month, to the end of the month, put in your application. So with application, the commissions have till January fifteenth to decide which bridges get replaced, this one's. And that's one place to figure out which one you're gonna replace, and we will have quotes beforehand, but. Again, to have a quote for the structure, and you actually have, you ask the contractor.
How can you get a quote for the structure if you don't know how big of a culvert that is gonna take to replace that bridge?
That's something I would figure here, if I grow a major, and then I, I get together with two north, I can call Brad, he can tell me. But it, it's charged, but I'll give a child. You gotta stay pretty equal to the same flows, what you had before. And then I'm just filling out the four oh four permits myself, because you have a core of engineers to get the approval on those. You have to have that four flow to, to replace it. But once we determine like what size that is, I'll call two north and I should get a quote, you have to two north, I'll put that in the file. We're gonna ask about for any contractor you want. At the end of the day.
Come back here.
If it comes to that, then we figure out what twenty percent matches the township.
You can't remember all of that, Dom, the Thompson Township. Well, I'd like to go with, give Jeff the paper, so, if I have to plan.
And I'm not negative, and, uh, you can't, that needs to go six. No, not right away, but eight, fucking ten, for the next guy, two, six, four. I've got a quote, yeah, but I need to help measure, and determine if it'll get to be.
Because I did have to pig in the north side of it last Friday, and fell through.
I literally grabbed a weed on the side of that bridge, it was gonna be hankered up, so people could see that there was no sides there, I grabbed that weed and pulled, and my foot went, cleared out over the road, and it was hollow underneath there. But that was the northwest corner of it, not the south side, because Dom would fix the south side earlier in the show.
And there's also, there's not a balance in the mouth, right? I can use, there's only so much money we get a year, right?
Yes.
Does the years come free serve for the townships, the applications?
We have to determine priorities. Once we've got all the applications, we can determine priorities.
The key to, the key to this program is, we don't want to use all the money up. So we're not gonna pull back money, we're, we're gonna want to get as much done as we can, because the idea behind it is, use all the money up. The state might say, well, this was a pretty good program, do you use all the money, because we have to stick more money. So. If you don't, it's allocated for Hand County, it doesn't need to use this one, go to Hand County. So we're, I mean, we're looking at trying to, the money we can get, do as many progress as we can.
What happens if this bridge collapses before it gets fixed?
And it hasn't been vacated.
It's a barricade up.
Is it, is it, is it the same paper or this is about? Making sure that a lot of agriculture goes across that bridge.
Pretty well here, the bridge, so we're not. It's up here, that's again, we get there.
Does the maintainer drive over?
What's that?
Does the maintainer drive over?
Or it glides across the.
That's.
If you got one that's in a location where it isn't, just like we were talking about before.
Yeah, I realize that.
I know Brad has sort of, uh, spoke against the concept of vacation. There's a lot to be said for vacation too, because it absolutely absolves, the townships have liability. They have no liability anymore, because they don't have your right of way. To the extent that what worth of a construction was there at one time is deemed to be an attractive nuisance, there could be potential liability. So, I think vacation is appropriate for some sort of chances, like we've had one before.
Can I assume a mister bridge out?
This isn't.
When I talk about vacation, the reason I said, when you're, almost most times, somebody just get down that road, and then you're gone, you can't. You can't be, be very careful about land, property, and then, because. I'm not the lawyer, but I've been in on enough, it's nice to back and forth, but there are, I think there's some rules on how much land you can give my land, and, 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 so like. Just make sure you do that just right.
All of the property on that road could be excess, accessed from one side or the other of that bridge, so if, if.
If that's the case.
There seems to be a concern, it could be barricaded and closed until it can be fixed, because there is access for all the property owners along there, that, that I can think of, that. If you use that road for any access, there wouldn't be access from both sides of that bridge, so, so if the, if the bridge had to be closed, it could be, that would be, uh, just my opinion from knowing that road.
If, if you really, if that happens, like, calls after a, a race right out there, I, I do have, I, we're running this all the time, where, yeah, we got to close them. So, you don't have the money yet, but the bridge fell down, well, you gotta, gotta close it until, but not when I say close, you gotta temporarily close it till you get the money. That, that is not, that happens.
Nice to have a contingency plan in place before you close the bridge. You can have the situation where you know a bridge is not good, it's nice to have a plan in place before you actually.
You have to be ahead of the game, and many times. Most of us, we're just really other.
Brad, what, what, what was you trying, two, two, you'd rather inspect these bridges for a township?
So, we're talking about, you know, hey Brad, I think this bridge is about ready to fall down, uh, I'm out here, you're not getting, you know, I, 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 I'm out here a lot often. So, so I, I am happy to do those, those kinds of things, when you need, uh, maybe write something in writing, that out, send the other one. But if you're just looking, hey, I, I think I need to close this bridge, you know, you're, just, I'm sure, yeah, we're, 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 we're not, but if you're not sure, I, I do that for, for other townships and other counties too. Because I'd rather. Do this right and do this safe than hold out for two or fifteen bucks, and then, or you have a bigger problem, so.
For everybody here that doesn't know Brad, Brad's from Altech Engineering, and he does all of our bridge inspections, engineering work for Hand County, so.
So, so a lot of these, like, you're talking about, especially if I know ahead of time, can you, tell me what you would call this one? I drive away with a lot of these, though, from bridge, 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 so, it's nothing for me to come under there and, and take a quick. Got a lot of written report, and load rating analysis, and then I got some different on the mail, but if you're looking at, yeah, I think this is for, um, but I, I've had some of our other dead, this is. Yeah, this is a, it, it, and there's a lot of them in this comic too, where, I'm trying to recall what, township, but they had some that. Pretty ugly, but the bottom of the underside slab looked, looked good, and I was, get it on your list, but this isn't what I can do to get out there and get close to it. So it's not all those bad news, the reason I just said, you know, joke about that, because usually by the time I'm involved. Nobody's, you know, wondering if it's, should be closed or not, and it just, uh, some, someone, someone else that had a rule of them that could be closed. Yeah, I'm happy to do that. If you don't have, if you don't have any other questions, we need to keep moving along.
I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but are we shot, and you guys have?
You guys have anything else to think of, to me? So, you, yeah, I, I'm gonna step in the back, and if you got offline stuff, I'll, I'll hang out here, and, um, tell you how to get ahold of me. Thank you, Brad, thank you all, thank you.
If anybody not get booked at one.
Well, last week we talked about CDL, and, uh, the group to face the journey, and, uh, but, I don't know if you guys have any guys' policy on that, or?
There's one here, my other question, what I would be, um, what do I give him? Basically, a year to get out of that, multiple tries, so, if, if it doesn't happen in a year, then what? Do we, it doesn't really say a year, or, or, is that mean one? Don't have a job, or we give it extended time, I don't know.
I think that's something we're gonna have to determine, case by case. But if there's anything like a deadline, so if I got something that's worth going, get out, instead of going, oh, wait, dude. Something we need to get done.
Everybody have a question with the policy of yesterday?
We're at the minute, we're standing for thirty days on there too, so, if you try to, um, but shouldn't have any problem with it, with townships.
I mean, I, you're just in violation of the policy then, of whatever action needs to be, I mean, does each one of our policies have a? How long's that, about, what happens if you? Violated?
Sometimes it's not said, they spell out, so people don't have to like, eh, I don't remember, I would do that, I don't know, those are what's said, that's what we do. I don't know.
So you're saying it's a indiscretion, just the way that they remain.
I, I guess so, yes.
In the absence of any language, it says the absence. I'm not sure I like it either.
Class one, best of three.
Do I, do I have to make a motion?
Say you got her. I'll move to approve the CDL policy twenty twenty-three dash zero one.
Second.
All those are favored. Now comparing Harrison Township. Listen, sure, this will be a good time for we're gonna make changes on policies of in the township, this is the perfect time to do it. My own personal opinion is we don't just go to move it and, and organize township. That's me, I don't know what you guys feel about that. In that particular township, the miles of road that's actually called now is just seventy-five miles. So it's not a lot.
So I guess I would ask you how many, how many road files?
Uh, I believe there's ten miles depending on the moonshot.
It doesn't count in that, so.
Correct, seven miles.
Yep, so there's still a lot of stone holes out there that I'd count as two miles or a mile on the border.
Two.
Two.
Yep.
What's, what are you doing in the Fall County like, you split that?
We actually take care of, we're staying seven miles and Fall County takes three minutes, seven miles.
That's that one, take one down and pass them around.
So.
Snow route, sorry. Closer, mail route, I got one. Is there a small route somewhere?
There's eighteen total miles in there, Township Road and Harrison Township, right now is where our policy would be five hundred.
With the new, with the new tax revenue available after the opt-out, looking back at the last five years of history for Harrison Township, if we look at an average, do we have where Florida's roads or? And I understand that's completely variable, we could have five bad winters in the road, but looking at history, does the revenue? And I.
With the opt-out now?
With the opt-out now, what do we have to do to?
I believe we will.
To provide snow removal?
Yes, it's a good question, I could ask if you backed up, take the snow removal away.
If we take the snow removal away, we can back, back off on that opt-out amount?
I believe so.
I want to discuss something with you guys that somebody told me from up, up north, and I won't, I will, I guess, not disclose who it was, but we talked about this yesterday. We've got two townships on the north end of our county that are going to be asking if they can leave Han County and move into Fall County. I don't know if they can or they can't, if.
I asked that same person if he was willing to pay for all the changes, the deeds and abstracts that could go along with the change. He didn't say yes. Is that because they're dissatisfied with what goes on here?
I, I believe so, I guess, I don't know, but if we've got two townships that are expressing a concern about moving out of Han County into Fall County, I would say there's something that means that you got to be.
It's like, it's all going to like, Fall County going to want them.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want something, but you gotta ask them to receive you on the other end.
Yep, I, I, Luke, I don't know anything about any of this discussion, other than that there was a discussion. And if, I feel we're dropping the ball somehow, it's lack of communication with these townships or what it is. If they're, if they're even discussing this, and I don't know, thinking who can, I don't know, I know nothing about that. But, um, if, if there was a discussion about townships moving out of Han County and joining Fall County, I think we should have a, a good honest sit-down conversation with these townships and find out at least why, you know, what, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
The townships that were unorganized are they, are they the ones that were unorganized or who are the ones talking about?
Well, I think one is, is the one that's still unorganized and one is one that's recently reorganized, is my understanding. But I, like I said, I don't know if it's possible for them to even do this, I, I don't know, I'm just relating what.
State law would dictate that, because they are created, just like communities are, by the state legislature. And exist by virtue of constitutional authority of the state.
I'm just, just.
I would as well think they're doing that, because you could have people who's more of a county, if their taxes go up, well, go find the county out west that has very little taxes to help join that, help join that county out there. I'd, I'd rate it okay, but I'd rather not.
Counties of the counties are set out in statute. So require a change of law?
Yes.
Very tedious to.
Next, I'm just relating what the discussion was yesterday, that, that if there was this discussion, I think it would be a good improvement government to say, listen down and talk, what are your grievances? I'm not, I would never guarantee that we're going to be able to fix any of their grievances, but I think we should know what they are, um, you know, I, I guess, I, I don't know, just wanted to relay that, that, I mean, I would never come up with it either, but.
I guess I was under the impression that the tax raise on this, on this township that we would provide it's cool.
They love my premise, but I, I just, let's look, we're in some trouble all the time with the snow removal. And I believe in most cases, if you weren't capable getting yourself out. There are the other townships that would stick in a county that they have to do the report for their own snow removal. And they call organized townships, they're responsible for, the residents are responsible for their own snow removal.
I think it might not too, if you told them which of those roads would be in.
I've got a map here, let's see, these are the roads that would be the snow removal.
There's little blue sections.
On the second map, Jeff says it's all these little blue sections of road are the ones that would require the snow removal.
They give individual properties, basically.
Yep. Yeah. I guess the good thing, because Brad said on snow removal, they're all right along the moonshiner with the road red box. But all but, all but this one down here. And I only like this one because we don't do, it's covered a little bit today, but Ontario's got two others down to Highway twenty-six that's more practical to go down it in value.
Well, I guess, I mean, I agree with, as a general rule, that we wouldn't be removing stone. Yeah, oh, no, yeah, on a prior, that we, that that's what we do on township roads. But in my mind, I guess what supersedes it is the fact that we just didn't go through this, and I, I think it was explicitly set by one of the, one of the benefits of passing the opt-out was to have the money to continue to follow these roads, I guess is my only.
To cover the maintenance week.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was said that, it was said that that's what this opt-out was meant to be used for. I mean, I guess it's different if we're saying that now we're not going to use, be the snow removal, so therefore your opt-out will be less, and then we can figure that out, but.
It, it makes it tougher when we propose the opt-out that way, and then say that serves a way, so. Same time, if there was ever a time we're going to change that policy, this is the time, in my opinion.
I guess maybe you start a little while, keep the higher where, where our expenses are and see where it ends up after a year's time.
I thought we made it abundantly clear on the record multiple times that we were not going to do any more snow removal if we didn't have the money. Are they unorganized?
Yeah, and so now with the opt-out, we should have money, but this would, this would bar us from doing it, even if we have the money or we didn't have the money.
And one thing about it is this, with, with only one unorganized township, and if it stays that way, it's certainly easy to track exactly what comes in and what goes out in that township. Where before, when this is all just considered unorganized territory to us, I, I said it's really not fair. Which one township has twenty-five miles of road and the other township has five miles of road that we've got to take care of? That, that taxation wasn't fair and equal, although it was the only way we were allowed by law to do it. Right now, with, with one township, and if we, if we stay with just one township, we certainly know what our revenue is and we certainly know what our expenses are. But pretty easy to track if we've got enough revenue to provide the snow removal. Or do we just take it out of the equation and, and readjust that section of that tax levy, which we have not yet determined for next year? We have the maximum amount determined, but we could order that if we had to, by when? For the township? If we move along with the tax deduction for, um, let's see that this month. In this one? Same as the county, we're running out of time for that then, so I would, I would guess we collect that probably this first year and see how we get along. If we, if, if the revenue is there to provide that snow removal, because that was, that's basically what we have complained about from the start. Is we have the money to do the waiting and low gravelling and stuff like that, it's these bad runners that the rest of the townships aren't paying for.
So do you think we could get, because you said that Harrison was maybe one of the townships that were looking out? And we're dissatisfied with what you're understanding?
They don't have to watch out with the map, or do they have to, we have to close these roads and they have to redo their?
By the way, with our policy right now, we have to, we've been putting everyone one way in. But that's hard to narrow, someday I say they have to, we have to, we have to limit.
As long as they have a funnel, it doesn't matter if they don't.
If they have to go around, from there to go around.
We can't close roads that are nature tract.
There's roads that they want to drive, yeah. So as I said, we got the snow removal then.
Um, I bet those numbers at home, that, that the costs for Harrison Township for the last five years. I would say, I would say we move that topic to that meeting on the, is it twentieth, twenty-first?
We were gonna do it when we're not, and I'm, I personally, the way it was represented with the people is it's that tax increase went through, we were gonna plow the roads. So that's my feeling, that's my stance.
I agree.
Well, one thing about, we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be short of three thousand dollars in the county budget, more than average over the last.
But also when we did this, we said we are not going to run out of debt.
Yep.
If they want money.
Yeah.
There's either the roads are going to fall up there to stall or whatever. But I, 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 I absolutely could not go for this, because that's not the way I represented what was going on. And at the time, so my feelings on it, we plow roads, plow the roads. You have, what you've got five miles or whatever it is that you plow, that we do, because we're gonna maintain the roads, we're gonna, we're gonna hold shoulders of that like we did before. Because that's how, that's how it was approached to everyone, you know, that it's what we were gonna do.
And I think we could, in my opinion, we'll get to that budget stage, final budget stage at the top one four, where we're gonna get more of, maybe more of a month of that day. We're gonna be able to see maybe some of that too, not that we're tempted now, maybe two guys a little more of.
At the first year, much as it was instead of. We can, we can do it on the second year, we'll have that come to us too, we know where we're at. We know roughly what the amount of money, the revenue is going to be, if we're gonna see how it's going to stand.
Sure.
And maybe it'll be, we gotta cut back on the lady, or, or something like that through the summer, in order to make the money stretch if it's not waiting.
True.
But to all of a sudden, ask them to raise their tax, ask for taxes to be.
We'll cut your services too.
Cut your services at the same time. I can, I can wait for that a lot.
Yep, I, I agree with you, we, we can't add taxes to them and say we're gonna provide our services, as long as the revenue covers these services, and I, I think we'll learn as we go on, that as long as the revenue covers these services, the services should be provided.
So is there a way to, what is the policy to say that, that the snow removal policy, I mean? We'll do what it's. So do we have, uh, okay, so is there a change in this from what we have, other than that?
It was basically gonna be otherwise. Like, we're gonna provide the same service, that's basically what our policy is now.
Did we refer this previous, uh, twenty twenty-three oh two revised snow removal and sanding policy for all of the rest of the county? We haven't addressed that yet, have we? The, the one before the unorganized snow removal.
I don't think we have.
I, I don't.
But is it, do we have a policy somewhere in there?
The number two?
Right.
Yes, but it, it looks, its complexion is based on all five unorganized townships, and then takes several sub-elements and throws them all together, so it's kind of a weird policy.
Are you talking about?
What about?
That's for the county.
That's why we're.
I guess what we are, that would be our policy for, yeah.
But it, it talks about unorganized ones in it, they're at the pound, so it's never right for you to, I mean, we gotta make adjustments to it if.
We're talking about oh two, oh three.
Oh two.
So it, it just won't be passed today.
Well, that is. We don't have.
Have you been striking that first?
Yeah, I like the areas that you want to change.
What else must be changed, I don't know?
Well, I don't know, that's it.
Well, we only have one snow removal policy for the county and that, also in the unorganized township. Secondary with use.
Yeah.
It'll all be, whatever the county policy is, we go to the unorganized township. Not on our guys, the secondary with use, the secondary levels.
We basically just, we basically respect the first paragraph and just say township roads over there would all be. Right?
You're, you're talking the first paragraph of twenty twenty-two oh two, where it says after the county highway system, is that what you're?
Uh, just taking unorganized townships completely off it. And then just change the second.
What it's saying in the county is, is that we need to plow the county roads first and the, the secondary with use would be plowed second.
But there, but, but there's no point, there's no point in Harrison Township, it's the only one, there's no point in running a pileback up there after all the rest of the county's done, if we're already right there. I can see where that policy applied before, because we had so much. I can see where that policy applied before, because we had so much unorganized, we had so many unorganized miles.
But that one is only probably due if you're up there.
They're on the motion, we'll get one where they're.
Right, so it's not. I want to wear the other.
But it should be, it should be clear, clear and concise in the wording.
So how does that look on purpose? Because if other townships decide to kick the budget.
Well, then we're back where we were before.
Correct.
Well, it's good. If other townships decide to do, become unorganized, but then we have to, then we revisit that. We would just have to wait and see if that, if it happens, okay, now we got to de-botage all this.
I think a big reason that they would do that would be for the snow removal. This is why I'm suggesting we get away from snow removal. Probably should part of it, didn't present it that way.
Well, that's, that's my whole thing. I, I, I couldn't do it. If we're going to talk equity, equitable taxation, then, then we're back to, well, if you want unorganized for the county snow removal, you're going to get extra taxation, because that's, that's what Harrison got, you know? I mean, it's, that's where this, where things originated from is, is.
We need to bring more revenue in.
Exactly, for the service provider.
Secondary road use, we need to have revenue, then we're going to keep them roads up.
Well, it needs to be altered.
People are doing nothing. Wait, pull motion.
I'd like to see if it's not, to me.
Is that what I'm reading now?
But I think if you're on, if you're on, is it two? No, I get what you're going to say, I understand.
I remember I could do the road law too, so I just, I just.
I got, I'm just, I'm just. I couldn't do it to the people.
It'd be a tough thing.
Which one are you looking at?
Two.
I do.
I really did.
Okay, so before we had a change, this was the policy that we were talking about. Jen's reading the other one? Yes, yep.
This is the change.
So basically, instead of that one.
So this, this one that he's got is what, what, what the change. Because you got in here, unorganized township roads. Unorganized township roads will be plowed only in cases of life-threatening emergency or after the request of the law enforcement, fire service, and medical. That's, that's twenty, twenty-three oh two.
So that's organized. Those are organized townships. This is unorganized.
Guys, if we're clear, if there's clear consensus that we need to continue to apply snow removal for the one organized township, it's covered in hell too.
That's what I.
Now, this is, this is a different version.
That's the one I'm looking at.
But no, that's the same as this one.
Okay.
That is the same version as well.
I, I think this is okay though.
That was a policy we had in the.
Pretty cool. I think it's fine.
I think it's fine, just that one. So in look, so oh three is respecting that completely.
Yeah, I can just go with oh two.
No, this is not the elements I'm reading.
The revised oh two is what we want.
The revised oh two. Oh three is the unorganized township.
I cut out what I think.
That's the one that we need.
I think oh two takes care of three if we use the revised.
So oh three basically refers to oh two.
I agree.
We figure if any changes need to be made on like an annual policy, it would be this, the snow removal policy that we just looked at, or that we just amended or changed there. So, um, if changes need to be made from year to year, we can change them on this policy. Um, and twenty twenty-three oh three will refer to the snow removal policy and the sanding policy. Does that make any sense?
I don't think we need to, we shouldn't have to pause.
Don't think we need to worry about it?
We don't need to oh three, just oh three.
You don't need to pause if you want to make the same thing. To me, if you want to make people get confused, that's a good way to do it.
I think we, I think we.
We always want to rest that thing exact.
This one here, the oh.
Oh two.
Uh, it's an oh two, we don't know what.
It's not the same, it's not the same one that's on the agenda.
No, it was not the same. So do we need to bring this back on the next agenda?
Is this not?
Oh, three, we're going to go here.
Number two.
You can.
Is that, this is not four, doesn't matter.
It's the wrong one.
So it doesn't matter.
Okay.
So what's this one?
Not to be angry.
But this is about mowing ditches or grading and all such.
Do you think it's?
I don't.
I guess I have.
Strategic ambiguity.
Basically, oh two makes that.
Never heard that expression.
Secondary road use. What the county does to the county road is going to do with the secondary road use. Secondary roads. They get treated the same. I need a motion.
I would love to approve, uh, policy number twenty twenty-three dash zero two.
In this one?
In.
The revised.
The form that is in my hands.
Two?
This one.
I think it's the same unit.
I thought that was labeled. Oh, it is. I'll say that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's my agenda.
When you got two that pretty much say the same thing, you kind of.
Yeah, there's a region that's under, I can open it.
The adoption of the Sully County gravel bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have.
What is that law? Basically, what you're doing is, Sully County already has this bid in place, and so you're just picking that up. We can use it. Basically, all you're doing is taking their materials, adopting them as you.
What, what is?
Didn't we see? Oh, it's a dollar.
A dollar, yeah?
Yeah. That's cheap.
That's real cheap.
Yeah. Except to you, you're the seventh county to get it.
You would, you would.
That's if I check, it's not next to her.
We need to go around.
Well, we get it.
You would want to do all of that?
I will move, move to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one. Second.
So where exactly? You go through, you go like seven miles straight, last stop Highway twenty-six, and then a mile south, and a mile west. It's a little closer to the market than we go to now, but it's, I would say now it's twelve hours, a hundred and fifty dollars. You can get it.
I got just across to the forty road. Do we have a resolution again?
You call, still looking for that resolution here, it's not. You go around this avenue. Yeah, print the county, the resolution. Yep, this is what I need.
Oh.
I should get it, of course.
Okay. Very.
Aye. Nine. Two. Three. Aye. Two. Aye. And then if you put down, is it good? Obviously.
Looks pretty good, I want to look at it. We're going to let it come up there and get a few towns tried before. And then just, I'll just pick it back up, so they come first, and we have to go through the bid process.
That's right. Well, sure. See, that's a lot of dollars.
That's going to be trashed and everything, like.
Yeah. It's too big for our lungs.
Huh?
It's too big for our lungs.
Wow. Yes. Jim, what?
We can motion to do a resignation.
Yes.
So we'll.
Avoid which one?
Resignation, that's kind of it.
Oh.
You'll have to. With some consideration.
You need a motion?
Yeah.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Doug, that was with commentations. Eighteen years of service.
I think I signed. I have it. Okay.
You do not have that ready for the true note.
Fantastic.
But it's, uh, very important thing with, uh, Jim Keeder, did they talk to you?
Jim called me, and then I called him back, and at this point, he's got Randy.
O'Shea.
O'Shea, looking at things for him, and they have to go through the cars eventually to do his, to do what they want to do, and they got to.
So it's going to be a while before it comes to.
Actually, he doesn't think that it's going to have to anymore, because FEMA said that they would pay for it regardless of you guys approving it or not.
Oh, okay.
So it really was just a rubber stamp visit was all of them.
So we can wait.
Listen on.
Was that pro-creek? Was it pro-creek issue?
What's it like?
I have a creek issue.
Except there were, before you would get to Old Millers, you went off to the east through that escher. That's whatever creek that is, Little Wolf maybe.
He's very little informed. I actually. You wait, no, it's not her.
So Wolf maybe.
Creek, we don't worry about that.
Yep. All right, Ryan, if we track back a little?
Yeah.
All right, so let's go back to where the season auditor, Big Fran.
Um, the first thing I have for you is the biennial school for elections, that's October ten nineteen. I'm just going to commute back forth, I'm not going to stay. I don't want you to be wherever, because I'll be gone. And then I have some old equipment that needs to be circled. Now, this was the original auto mark stuff, where there's big, big, heavy monstrous things. They took them in trade when we got the new tabulators and the new handicap assistance machines. So you're approving basically to remove them off our inventory, even though we never owned them, that belong to the state.
Need a motion for that? That is. Second. I was tired.
The next one is the workman's comp for newest sheet. I sent it in so that we could take advantage of the twenty-two percent discount for early sign-on. Um, the reason I wanted to visit with you about it, because like everything else across workman's comp, changes with the times. So what I do is I have to see all of the employees and categorize them according to the workman's comp people. And so like, I'm clerical, you guys are clerical, um, Arlen is outside, he's in a different part. But basically, just what I wanted to take from this is how each employee's workman's comp costs different based on what their job status is, according to them. So it's nothing you need to act upon unless you want to say, no, let's go look somewhere else for workman's comp. To me, it's fair enough. But it's just one of the many. Any questions on that? The next one is a resolution that authorizes the use of credit cards. And I brought this too, because the current policy we have on credit cards is kind of big, to be honest with you. Um, and the highway department wants to use a credit card for purchases that they make that kind of have an immediate need. And right now, they've been coming to me, and that doesn't always work. So, but honestly, I think it's appropriate that they have one of their own that's managed, like we manage the rest. And then we come back in the future, create new policy on how credit cards are to be used.
How does the use of that kind of charging translate into the world of vouchers and warrants?
Well, it's, it's very strange, because normally, we have to have possession of items before we pay for them. And even when I was in the sheriff's office, many of the bookkeeping, legislative auditor, whatever, would say, we were committing the county to paying this with this credit card. And they don't have the choice, you guys wouldn't have the choice to say no until the bill arrives.
It would be.
Could be forty-five days after the purchase. So.
Was it really that we were caught up?
Well, that would be in the subsequent policy. Because the highway department has different needs and we.
Right.
Way different. Right now, the discretion spending limit's like seven hundred and fifty dollars, but some of their purchases are way beyond that.
So we have credit cards now, but no, nothing like that resolution like this?
No, no, because I felt it was more important to memorialize it as a resolution than just as a policy.
Has Arlen reviewed that resolution or?
Well, if you read the agenda, so I don't know. Want to see it bigger, Jim?
No, I think I can read it, I can read it up for them. I just don't understand how. I just don't understand how we will receive for ours group, an itemized list of those items that were purchased. If they're purchased via credit card, when you only get a credit card, balance due. And we have a few arguments, this statement, please, we say he bought a wrench at Ace, we're going to say he bought a bottle of.
We scrutinize those between the department and us.
Okay, you guys will see that when we.
Learn the vouchers.
That will be on there?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my question.
And my, my concern is even though we, we, I guess we give money, even if we put a daily limit on those cards, uh, how many days would they use them before, how many days would they abuse them if they were going to, before anybody even knew that that daily limit had been used all down? I would like to know what the county's possible liability is here of.
Ultimately, you can deny a payment, but the department.
Do we use those like when you guys are going to a conference or something, to check in at a hotel?
Sometimes to reserve the room, some use personal.
I, I use my own all the time, I just plan for four rooms or five.
But then you get reimbursed, right?
Right, but a month later.
Or we get billed.
Get all, like, or we do direct billing.
Okay.
Luckily, this time I was able to do direct billing from school. If you could get them to do it.
And we don't screw up.
You know, like, when I started, and I had to pay ninety, like nine hundred dollars for books, I put them on my own credit card. Most people can do, you know, not everybody can do that, you know? And then if, if we don't go through the same pay thing when my credit card is due, then I'm paying interest on money that I paid for my job.
So you think about getting just the card.
Yeah, that's right. So right now, I don't know. How many hours are you going to have up there?
This is just for the highway department, and I have one, Arlen has one, the sheriff's office, that's one.
That's it?
That's it.
And so you're thinking like, one for the highway department, that is?
Right.
Or this is just for the.
To add to the fleet, yes. Yes. You want your own?
No.
I don't think it's a bad idea, but the problem is that they have probably, and I don't have to follow the leader, because if Arlen was sending their charges and stuff, they don't, they will lose their job over the time.
Right. And so like the other day, they needed a part for the lay-down machine.
Right.
And the guy wanted security on it, so if you don't, they don't disappear or whatever. And there's a big variety of reasons that they want it. It just saves using the personal guards.
Well, I don't know, take the problem out of that, what would be, it's all going to come through your department. Well, I don't know, take the problem out of that, it would be, it's all gonna come through your department, something like all these different cards, cause that's what will be paid in the end. So I don't know, for a work, that'd be a year, but it makes sense to have different departments have that, but all of my.
Right, so, like, they were coming to me to do that, but I didn't have a problem doing that, but there's times when it would make more sense for them to have their own.
Right.
And the, the second policy, if you approve this one, it does spell out certain limitations. So like, my card, I always have lower the number, cause I don't wanna be responsible for five thousand dollars in charge tax, but I don't mind being responsible for six hundred dollars in charge tax.
If his card was lost or something, or number compromised, but you don't have that policy here?
No, not, not in there. I know there was one adopted, I cannot find it. Before we were quite finding policy.
So the theory is that there would be one card to the highway department, and that's it.
That's not gonna be open. Nope, one.
Is that the limited purposes this proposed resolution?
It is.
Just for the highway department?
Because the bank, the bank won't even let them process the application.
Because these, I mean, we've already had the auditor, sheriff, emergency manager.
Huh?
So I'm gonna get that fly, it's getting annoying.
I would move that we approve it for that limited purpose then.
Do it over a second. Second.
Okay, my thought is though, you don't have to leave a department to do that either.
Well, it says, it's the purpose, that's why I was just letting you in and saying something about myself.
It does on the top, but then from the down, the offices or departments approve that credit cards purchasing, blah, blah, blah. Auditor, sheriff, emergency manager, now highway department. So it doesn't, it doesn't show the other departments in that, but.
Can't he just give the card to whatever department he has needs?
They just call me, tell me what they want.
Oh.
Like, and if she needs something for four years, she just sends it to me, like, we did this on Amazon, I'd do.
Does that work, Jamie?
But like.
Yeah, I, I, I was just, I just read that top line where it says get to permanent sign this, where it says, I don't.
To me, I don't know, maybe, maybe it's not anymore work for Doug, but I guess if Jamie can put her thing online, that credit card from the county, she doesn't have to use yours and she doesn't have to come see Doug. And he's gotta stop what he's doing, you know, and she can still. Sure?
I don't think that.
Or anything, just order whatever she wants on Amazon, so, maybe, I don't care.
You're so, what do you wanna?
Not just on my ass, but in here or who they have.
You came right there on the card?
I believe it says they don't care.
Since you're the only one that's shook your head yet.
I don't, I, I don't, the only time we ever listen to both the words.
Generally, there's three.
Okay, well, I guess it's about, yeah, can I get a second?
Guys.
Yeah.
Okay, since this is a resolution, we're gonna go.
Hi.
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 Hi, Adam. I heard the flies, I disappeared, we're gonna fly slide.
This would make a lot more sense for you, with that conversation you're gonna have about secondary growth. Part of the taxation is this chart, which shows the base amount of levy, which is five point six five. The application of CPI, which has got a percentage of it, three hundred and sixty dollars, Harrison Township's out one point two percent of growth. So, the original tax that they would be paying on today is going to go up to this amount for the next year. The opt-out. Is this amount, which produces a levy of one point four three eight, which results in that much taxation, the CPI, and broken down to five outcomes. So at the end of the day, this is the distributed revenue, there's to come. Makes sense?
So on there, on the total taxation is two point zero zero three per thousand, but I get a value of twenty-one.
Correct, right? Yep.
So we're, so we're going, we're going twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy-two of collections from the target to forty-three thousand and nineteen.
Right, and that's why I said this would make a lot more sense, I could've squeezed it in before your presentation.
Well, you guys gotta make. I think, is that right?
Yep.
It's in those policies.
Yep, so basically, what I've learned from this whole process is that it's a lot easier for me to think of you guys as being township board for Harrison Township. As opposed to county commissioners for Harrison Township, because really, you're substituting as their board, it doesn't exist. And so I think, whoever we're trying to be said, if we get the materials from the highway department, what they're spending each month on that, it's gonna be a lot easier to track. So we know if we're within our limits, cause what's not here is the money that we received through driver's license, or not driver's license, license plates and prorate. Bank franchise tax and all the other little splinters taxes, that this is property tax law, this is property tax law. So. If I refer to you as like, as the township board for Harrison Township, that's why I'm doing this, because I think it might not only help you guys understand that it's specific to that part of the responsibility, but it might help the general public understand. That we're talking to the township board for Harrison Township, and maybe others can say that. So, any questions on that?
Nope.
Alright, if you're so inclined, I was originally gonna ask to schedule a meeting for October for the purposes of supplementing some budgets. But now that you're meeting in September twentieth, is it okay for me to advertise to do some budget work on the twentieth, or do you wanna keep it out till October? So what you're looking at is elections, it's going to be over by at least two thousand dollars. Road and Bridge Cash is seventeen thousand and a half, but today, it was more than that. So we'll again transfer money from the general fund cash into Road and Bridge Cash. Emergency Management, this is for the purposes of taking money that we receive from the state, putting it into the accounts, cover expenses. The library, law libraries and the whole, cause we continue to buy books that nobody reads and.
That we have to have, remember?
Yep. And Susie's MFP fund, fit into the minus there, so we just need to.
Is there any utility in this in September as opposed to October? Let's just keep that September meeting just for like, it's not add anything else with this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pack one class and stuff like that, cause that's what we set it up for, is the budget.
Perfect. Alright, the next item that I have for you is a request to consider changing the probationary period to three months instead of the current six months. That allows to extend up to six months. We had a department head meeting and I believe, was everybody here?
Yeah.
The both of us were here.
Yeah.
And we all came to the same conclusion, because we were talking about ways to incentivize people to apply and to stay here when we're hired. So do you have any thoughts with that?
We can.
Um, well, clear motive is that my original request was that they be able to start using their accumulated leave. And then the conclusion, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys, was the consensus was to wait till they were at least on probation, but we could shorten the probation. Cause we do have some new employees who have to take time off, personally, they would have to take unpaid time off, even though they have leave that they're earned.
What is the normal probation period commercial?
Yes, well, six months.
So.
Not the government's.
So why, so, so why do we know our policy is that they can't get to anywhere, sick anywhere annually until six months?
Right.
I don't see a problem with.
Well, my thought is that I see, yeah, I don't see any problem, I'd see it twice, but I don't know about changing that probationary, not discretionary, to me. Then I mean, if you send the one to the hour, then I'll set these in the life. Why am I six months, is it thirty?
So extend the probation, you, the department has to come here and tell.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we're talking about here in a moment.
I feel good with you.
I'm sorry. Um, we thought that when we were talking, that we decided that we wanted to do the probationary to ninety days instead of six months. But then after their first paycheck, they can start using those hours that are theirs.
Yep, I missed that.
Because it's already on their paycheck, then I have three point three three hours.
What's your experience in commercial board? What do you guys have for discretionary?
I already remember the board.
Bender on the, no. But I, so what I should say is in the first day period, if I'm getting you right, they will be able to access their.
After they get their first paycheck.
After they get.
Probably all the days here.
So we're giving up a zero day, roughly, before they can access their sick leave and. Right, exactly, cause it's not about how to get into trouble.
How do they have a crew at that point?
But they have three point three hours and six point six.
And they are accruing it?
Yes.
So you know they can't use it?
Right.
Yes.
It's not like they, they're, they're happy that we get it, but.
So is that the only driving force on this, is the ones?
I can be.
I would rather.
It's there, that's it.
I was thinking a lot of people take them out.
Well, they can now, just after their first six months, but the department head, it's does discretionary. Well.
You still have to sign off on their request to leave.
But like you said, if you have a new employee, they come in, I tell them, well, you gotta go off the clock to go to bathroom.
They go to the clinic, they go to the bathroom, and the clinic.
Katie, what was the probationary period at the bank?
Well, we had ninety days, you know, right?
It was?
Yeah. And.
I think.
I just think when you say six months, you have to work six months before you can take a day off work, whether it's leave or like even an hour to go like to call a day, you have to.
At the bank, you say it's like that?
Yeah, I, I, ninety days, yeah, you can start averaging your vacation.
Come up here.
No.
Well, I'm not hard on you, I mean, so sometimes.
My, my work sort of is pretty much a long time to me of the waiting period if just.
In ninety days.
Four months.
Yeah.
And the heck the work, I just.
In ninety days. You're gonna know whether or not that person's gonna be a good fit.
So.
And if they earn the three hours, they are the three hours.
But then that's for the extension, I mean, if you needed more time in the extension system.
Saying.
Say that again, wait again.
Cause the sheriff's office is wanting a six-month extension if you needed it.
Yeah.
You mean of the discretionary, in that case, the sheriff?
Yes.
Right.
I don't think we can have a policy like that, because I think we argued by a great employee that they're being discriminated against.
Right, but, well, honestly, they are, but in other areas, the human resources stuff, you can do that. But what I've established, what we said is that we shouldn't be extending anybody's. If you were in that constituency, at the first promotion, there should be no second.
Okay, so, just, where, I think we're talking about, I think we're talking about two things at the same time.
Yeah, this is kind of what we think, would these acts change? Not change what, it's change it all.
You want, okay, so you want the people to have access after the, if I'm getting this right, you want people to have access to their, uh.
Accumulated leave.
Accumulated leave after their, after thirty days, basically.
Yeah.
The first paycheck.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thirty days.
I don't see how you can deny it to, they've earned it.
But, 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 yeah, we want.
He is there and they've earned it.
Yeah, but, but the.
We want a position.
You wanna shorten the probation period to three months instead of a six?
Yes.
Yeah, so you wanna do the access to their, uh.
Accruing.
Accruing in three months, in three months probation.
Right.
And, and after the three months, if the department head feels that person they got.
Put the option of extending.
The option. I don't have a problem with that. I'm not for that.
I'm all for giving them any stuff, I don't.
Hours?
I'm, I'm for, I'm for the right way.
I have a problem with.
I don't know.
Do you think?
To me. I just wanted to make sure that they are.
But I just got three months and probably then. Three months, if they, if you were willing, that person's gonna work out three months.
I don't know if extending it to six months is gonna make it out.
But I mean, if they get paid.
As my chief member, it's a bigger.
Well, you, you, your department is different than in the.
Day.
The justice department. Yeah, cause actually, if he hires somebody that's uncertified, then they don't make the academy.
Right, yeah.
So.
And they can get out and he's only out twice a year, not once.
Three. But.
Not harder, but they can.
Only do it, uh, do it a year without.
Right, but I still agree that would be a real big issue if someone could.
It doesn't happen very often. No.
It really does, you hate paying the same, right?
Yes, right.
And so, if you're a good employer, that's different.
Exactly, it just opens up easier for us to. It does a foundation if they deserve it, it's up to us, and if they wanna at least use their sick vacation, it's up, uh.
Especially if you have a real problem.
I don't hear.
It doesn't matter, I guess, I, I don't know.
Just trying to make it a little more employee friendly, just.
I think we would be much more employee friendly after three months period, you know, discretionary.
I don't think we should, I don't think there should be.
Yeah, but in the insurance department, that person, he's not certified, he doesn't, uh.
Right, it's probably state law, so, I mean, our policy's.
Doesn't need to have that.
Just tell me what you wanna bring back, two months, fixed?
I'm for three.
Is that three months accumulated time?
Yep.
At right of paycheck.
Yes, let's go bring that to you.
Well, that's my good, I don't.
Well, that's my all, I think, well, I was just gonna say, we could get a second, we'd take it right now. Oh, now we all agree on it.
Yeah, Jeff, we should move that here in the upstairs.
Yeah, Jeff was here in.
I think, I got a motion on the floor.
Is that a motion?
There must have been. Because I don't, I got to bring it back, I want to keep it back. Title seven.
What do we, so you, you can use?
Three months discretionary.
Three.
Probationary period, and immediately after the earning of your payment, if your first paycheck, you qualify for using your.
Can I get a leave? Can I get that set down to earn leave? Cause once they earn it. Cause if you switch to two-week payrolls.
Yeah, you can.
Oh, okay. First paycheck.
We're just gonna stay on that, and they got thirty.
If they earn it, like, in our book, it exists, they can.
So could I take off fifteen minutes at the end of the first day I work, is that what you do?
No. No, you can, uh, others may.
Well, if I hire you, you're gonna be doing that, you're probably not gonna be.
So we're leaving my job, there's no help.
What's your idea, Tom?
Okay, we haven't written on it, I got a second. Uh, we, we all understand that we're low.
Yep.
Scott, two, three, no.
I have no problem with the other, so I still just want you to be reading. Someone, I mean, someone might, does it break it up in three parts, if they, if they're four or five months, you say, ah, who else is right fit?
Good stuff.
I don't know.
What do you mean? So that's, it was stuff we can, how much is this?
It was.
This is.
So what happened while I was turned away?
Yeah, right, what was your highness, what was that?
I don't know, I, I just, I just said I don't know if I got.
You know, it didn't come with.
Yeah, like, you're thinking the three months, you would help as far as hiring someone, I mean, three months of occupation.
I do.
You do.
I do, I just interviewed people.
And I haven't covered that one.
And I actually emailed the counties around us to compare us a little bit. I don't know, everybody's kind of all over the place, I guess, but there are counties that have made better, they have tiered vacation time for lon- longevity, all that kind of thing sells out as well. Um.
Do we have longevity?
We're just, we have longevity today, we don't have longevity, we don't have like one to five years, much time off, et cetera.
We're trying to think of ways to sweeten the pie, since that's cheap.
And so they'll still.
Just, just those things that we feel like will.
So we're, I mean, what's the little portion today?
Yes, there is more.
Well, stay on, we touched on it, it's just the incremental allotment of vacation as an employee status. Because right now, it's kind of of a limiting factor, so for example, if in the first year you earn forty hours, if yours two through five, that would be one twenty, and yours six through ten, one sixty, and eleven and beyond, it would be two hundred.
Five thousand.
So we're here. Well, it gives you something to look at, as to your employee going on flat.
Right now. And then, right now, it's a flat four weeks, that's usually the past four years, it's fourteen.
Definitely, that's right.
And you don't get any more, so it's just.
And then they don't let anybody hear it over anything, so I'm just thinking for people, I mean, this could be a really long conversation.
This is a, this is a good position.
But.
Yeah, listen to this one next time.
Yeah.
Listen, get this one done first.
Yeah, okay.
I got a motion in second. I would say we're on five.
I'm not saying it's not early at all, but let's get this one done.
What'd you do?
We go with Greg and do it.
Here, please.
See, can't carry over there, any of that coming?
This is no, this in no way affects our. Fire, the fire, the pain, it becomes a problem in any way she performs.
Yeah. I'm gonna try and be brief because I know that we're behind time, but the Public Insurance Alliance is asking us to renew our insurance. And so what I wanted to do this year, instead of just doing it myself, is to see who amongst you would like to participate and help to go over this. Because there's questions about like courthouse values, letting it be increased, these are topics that we talked about briefly earlier. So is there anybody amongst you that wants to offer a second opinion as I look through it?
I would help.
Okay.
Yeah, just like I said, I didn't look through all of those, but as soon as I seen our elevator was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars value and our courthouse was. Five point two or five point five or whatever it was. Like somebody once stated, you couldn't do the murder award in here for less than several, several million dollars.
So the next item, which is not looking, is the Alternative HR. This is an organization that does human resources work, but it's not full time, it's on call. So it is a bunch of human resource professionals who are in this, much like you would call. A doctor who calls and do either telephone consultation or video consultation. And so I have a meeting with them on Thursday, if any of you are interested in coming to that, you're more than welcome. Uh, it's a video meeting, and if you wanna watch it at home, I can share the link with you. Uh, but then I want, it looks interesting, and if it's not orderly expensive, then I would ask them to come and do a presentation to you.
Are they offering their HR services to county counties that are kind of a crisis with this?
There are several other counties that utilize this instead of hiring somebody to be in-house HR. Instead of finding out that I'm having to work for them, so they had some other duties to them.
Okay, and certainly they're aware that we are a government employer, not a private sector employer.
Yes.
Have experience in both sides.
Yep, they're people that specialize just in that.
Was it bad till the time, okay?
Anybody wanna join me for that?
I would.
Okay.
I would. But that's where to get that for us for free.
Well, kind of, but. After reading some of the lawsuits that come through, I'm just. There's not that personal risk, what happened?
Well, and. And some of the human resources. Uh. Questions or situations, maybe offsite. Not so much personal relationship would be better, depending on, depending on the costs.
Or the impact.
Yeah, but they're gonna have to learn county policy and all that stuff, but. Did you want to talk to me?
Yeah.
Okay, Keith is here, he must have visited with you about ability received, so come on up, Keith.
This is a while ago, which is a little over six years ago, I was arrested in sort of a jail sentence. It was just odd to me that it took six years before it was ever brought up or sent on me. And I called to try to figure out about it, and I don't even know, I don't know for sure if he was even supposed to send this out, if the chain of command, I don't know what it says. So I took it to the courthouse in Deo County, and they looked at it, and they told me they can't find any jail anything against me, but they said it might be a state deal. And when I called here, the only thing I got to was wallets in our loan book. And I said, okay, so it takes six years for this to be brought up, and really, sometimes it does.
Which one, which office?
The auditor's office.
Auditor's, oh, okay.
Yeah. And if I owe eighty bucks, I'll pay it, but it's really odd to me that it takes over six years for it to be brought up. Thus, what really puzzles me is this is just for one night, and I stayed three nights total.
I stayed three nights total?
Yeah, and I got a bill for that night. And I was two, except I, I stayed one night, moved out the next day, and then I had to serve two nights as a sentence after that. And I mean, I got paperwork here that says that I had to have everything paid as part of the court deal, cause I was also on a scream bracelet. For several months after that, and it shows that, hey, nothing that I've seen says anything about jail other than this. And the auditor's office in Deo County was kind of amazed that I got a handwritten note that at the bottom says, keep this receipt.
Okay, okay.
They were one.
I would move to vacate his lien.
Go right here, second.
One second.
Let's see it up here. Those are. I. Move that, thank you.
Appreciate it.
That will be too. Okay. So, okay, that was the paper you got gave you.
Colonel.
Oh, okay, I thought it came, I thought, I thought it came from. Neither county. So that basically just, it's just to clean it up. So is there oil like that out there?
Well, there's probably two more days somewhere.
Well, when we go through, when we go through our, we're.
Basically, I said that.
You see that he spent, he was, he was given credit for three days.
Yeah, but not that sense.
But that's not what you charge them. Right. They don't get charged for three sentences, you know, eight, we take that bill, and after their sentence, they take. But am I wrong, just assuming that there's, you said thousands of them? So when you're working to clear those up, you're gonna come across them.
This, this ain't going through, this is something in the future, if there's thousands of them that are, like you said, maybe twenty years old. This is something that has to come before the commission, before that bill is sent out.
Well, that's a sure, about every ten, fifteen, twenty years, we'll pass a law that vacates all of those ancient things, and then you clear your books.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that any of those old bills should come before this board and a decision be made.
You wanna go through them?
Well, literally, there's. But if you were a thousand city ass, instead of sending it to the person, maybe it should, like you did to Dallas, and we can look at it and see.
No, you gotta remember, the, the lien is a function of statute.
Yes.
It's not discretionary under parts.
So in our liens, it should be recorded, when he's got, it should come in what lien you see every, every month?
It was.
Continuity for six years?
No, it only gets recorded once.
So it's when it's recorded?
Right, the problem existed because there was no collection ever taking place in the songs, and then we started it, order then go. So it's just like, I have thousands of these type of liens, and I have thousands of other liens. Not just for that. But yeah, if, if you wanna vacate them all, we can start them afresh and really try to keep it alive. That's a long line.
Somebody might ask that, like, I've been volunteering, paid one.
And that's just a regular one.
Well, and we, yeah, we, we collected that one on Perkins, it's like fifteen thousand dollars.
Wow. But I realize it's late, Dylan, so I'll be, uh, I'll be brief. Um. Start off, for good information, uh, last month, uh, we approved the house of grass to kind of reseal all of the windows. And they're going to do that on the, uh, the last week of this month, or start of the first, or start of the first, the last week of this month, or the first week of next month. The, uh, the amount that was budgeted for that was twenty-five thousand in, um. Uh, capital improvements, their bill is gonna be twenty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-eight. Uh, we discussed that last month, I bring it up because there are several things that I'm gonna ask, uh, for money for, uh, here briefly. But to give you an update of what the extent, what the budget looks like, I have, uh, seven, approximately seven thousand left in. Uh, fees and professional services, uh, approximately ten thousand left in, um, repairs and maintenance. And the pro- approximately fourteen thousand left in supplies for the end of the year, so for about thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, don't have any, uh, regular expenses that are coming up, uh, the, uh. The fuel is, uh, the fuel has been paid for, we've got ninety, approximately ninety-three hundred gallons in the diesel tank. So we should be able to get through the, at least the first week of February with that. So no major expenses coming up, so going down the list here, the elevator project, uh, the elevator's almost finished. Uh, we have, uh, still have, uh, five percent retainage that has not been built yet. That's still be one thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents. The things that remain to be done is the emergency heater needs to be installed in the penthouse, there's a heat pipe up there now. It has to cause its computer to throw them out, they have all that electronics, it has to be climate controlled. So they've got an air conditioner and, uh, a heat pipe. If it gets down below ten degrees, the heat pipe's not gonna work, so, uh, DJ Hughes is installing a, uh, an emergency heater. To augment the heat pipe, he's gonna do that either this week or next week.
You say that stuff's in the attic?
Yeah, oh, no, in the penthouse on top of it.
Oh, way up there.
Where the, all the equipment is, that comes under retainage. We still have the, uh, we also still, so that's under the contract, there's not gonna be any additional money, except for that thirty-one thousand that they've not built yet. We also have the, uh, decorative control panels that need to be installed on the first, second, third floor. They originally were gonna ship this week, now they're gonna ship this fifteenth of next month. Uh. So, well, if you did, and this may end up, this may end up being an issue, that, an accounting issue at some point, if it ends up going past the first of the year, but we're not there yet. And my understanding is, we're not gonna, we're not gonna finish, they're not gonna send us the bill for this retained until everything is done. One other thing that needs to be done is the, um, the boiler up on the third floor got scuffed up, the painter's gonna come back and fix that. All that, it's minor, but all that comes under the retainage. One thing that's not there that I would like to let you know, I don't know how much it's gonna be yet, but when BJ's out here at some point, he needs to reinstall. The vertical obstruction beacon, the red light on top of the, uh, on top of the, the remaining radio mast. That's not, I don't know how much it's gonna be, but it's gonna be several hundred dollars. Uh, I assume it's gonna be less than a thousand, but it's, it needs to go up there. That's not covered under, that is not covered under the contract, so he may be able to get that up this month, I just don't know how much it's gonna be. I just want to have your permission to go ahead and deal with that as it comes up.
What do you notice that required by law at that height?
I have been told to, you know, I've been told, well, I, I can't, I've heard that it's not. But here's the thing, we've got the vertical obstruction beacon, we've got an electrician that can install it, and we're next door to ele- and, uh.
Helicopter.
Helicopter, yeah, let's just put it up there.
Yeah, it's just being a good neighbor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of.
I, I, my understanding is, we're not legally obligated, but I think, you know, we need to do it. So I had no idea how much it's gonna be, are you guys okay, we just go ahead and do it in that. The, uh, the next thing, so with that done, the elevator's finished after that. The next thing is, uh, the grain for the balcony out here, we've got two options in dealing with this. One, and it has to be dealt with to get this water taken care of, I've got a temporary sump pump out there, we can, um. Create a more permanent sa- sump system to take the, the water out of there. The more I think about it, the more I look into it, I do still, now I think that's practical because of the winter, it's gonna get cold, we're gonna have, we'd have to heat it in some way, and it's just gonna be, it just. It just is not gonna work long term. So that leads us back to, we come up with a, um, the, uh, we four drilled a hole, the four inch hole, put in a, uh, put in the drain. What I would suggest that we do, and I talked with the State Historical Society about this, apply for a Deadwood grant for this. And the deadline for the Deadwood grant is October the first, so the next meeting is October the third. What I would ask is for you to authorize, uh, the chairman, or whoever you authorize, to sign the grant. So that I can turn it in by October first, and what I'm gonna suggest, what I'm gonna try for, is for them to pay for the whole thing. Uh, confirmed right now, the price is still four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to drill the hole. And I've spoken with, uh, Daryl Walker down at the colony, he can't got back with me with a stainless steel counter coated, uh, down spout. That will blend in with the building, I miss there's a match building, that will blend in with the building, was appropriate to the building, he's looking at about a thousand dollars for that. So. Uh, I could have said a fifty, maybe, my thought is, is ask for the whole, uh, is go ahead and ask for the whole thing, and just see what they have to say. And we're probably gonna ask, we're, we're gonna ask for match, I'm gonna suggest that the elevator fit in the match. For this, uh, the expenditure that we've done in elevators, that, but we can only, we only know if, when we try, if we try. But I would need you to authorize, uh, with chairman or whoever you want to do it to sign.
Okay. All right, what is your tech, your composition of your motion, just to approve the request?
Move, uh, to request that Will apply for the grant for the drainage problem on the balcony. And authorize the chair of the county commission to sign the application.
The next thing, uh.
Well, I just got my question, cause the, uh, Deadwood, we didn't get anything from the elevator.
We did not get anything, I did not ask them for it, they, now, they did come out, they're, they're stacked right now with what we've done with the elevator. So I'm hoping that's gonna translate into some goodwill on this. And I'm thinking, like I said, you know, if, if they can't, maybe we can use the elevator, if for whatever, if they're in terms of reasons, we can't use the elevator as match. Maybe what I'm about to describe next will, will serve as, uh, as match funds to go to this. And that is, uh, blinds and painting in the register of deeds office, the register of deeds, they need good blinds. And I've looked and looked and looked and looked, and I finally found somebody, Vanburg Interiors will do, uh, two custom blinds for the, uh, front office. Uh, they are, uh, they're roller blinds, they're UV protected, uh, they fit, they're, they're nice blinds, they're also twenty, uh, two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars.
For all of them?
Two thousand, two thousand three hundred and eighty or twenty?
Two thousand three hundred and eighty, yeah, so.
Is that for all those blinds?
No, not all, those are for the ones in the front office, not the ones in the back, the office. The ones in the back office would be another five thousand dollars, but I don't think we need to do that, I think we just need to do the front office. And, well, one of the things, they, I, we basically had to do it with all of the building, but this serves as a good experiment to see how well this is gonna work. The issue is over there, they're taking all those photographs, they're putting the blinds up, and they're using the blinds quite a bit more than anybody else is, and their blinds are falling out. The ones that are in there, so.
The lights that are in the back room, the vault area?
They're a good, they're reasonable shape, without falling down.
They look good from the street?
They do, they.
They don't look aged or stained or anything?
No, they're, they look just like those.
Okay.
But the problem we're gonna run into is, is they're gonna start failing, just like they did in, uh, did, well, it's the same, it goes back to the same thing with dealing with the windows. The window seals are failing because they're thirty years old, that's why we're resealing the windows. These were the first blinds to, to fall down, there're gonna be others that fall down, and when they fall down, replace them with something or water.
I think we should do the front room and leave the vault.
That's what I'm suggesting, spare the, I, I'm suggesting we leave the vault. Uh, and we spend, uh, the twenty-three hundred and eighty dollars on the, uh. Uh, on the, the blinds for the front room. Now, as part of this, that room used to be, I was willing to do it out of, uh, building maintenance next year recommended. But since the blinds are being replaced, I recommend that we go ahead and paint the, uh, the build, paint that front room. for, uh, before the blinds and these blinds go in. Now, I don't mind painting, I painted other rooms, I painted the, I'm right now in the process of painting Doug's office, the, the back, the back room here, uh, and the auditor's office, and I painted, uh, last year I painted the sheriff's office, uh, downstairs, and I painted other, painted the jury room upstairs. But I noticed something when I painted the sheriff's office before they put the carpet in, it took a long time, and I disrupted that office. And, uh, the, uh, granted, the average customer for the sheriff's department is not gonna be that upset about have that, that happen, the offices are. But these offices up here, I would recommend that we do, have it done professionally to a professional standard, and they do it quickly, preferably overnight, so that the, uh, the offices is disrupted. So, now, with that in mind, I was hoping to come in here today with a, uh, with some process, I don't have it again, Omar's painting, Don and I recommended him, he came out here, uh, last week, I finally got him out here. Uh, he took the measurements, he's gonna get back with me with an estimate, and then I'm gonna find some other painters. We can wait a while on this because this, uh, offer, this proposal for the blinds for two thousand, three hundred and eighty is valid through the end of October. So what I would suggest is, is that we get the, uh, I get some bids, come, paint in that office, come back to you. I don't think it's, it's not willing to be, well, I won't help by how expensive it's gonna be, but again, I recommend these front offices that do that professionally to a professional standard and very quickly, so we don't disrupt the office, and I will bring the bids back to you next, uh, next time, and do all of this at one time.
Would they be the same color they are now?
Well, it'd be whatever, uh, whatever Suzie wants, so.
Have you talked with, uh, Patty Burdo and, uh, Gil Bruman?
No.
They, they paint.
They paint very well.
They, they, we have them painted in our house, and they're, they're pretty, they're ultra fast, and their painting is exceptional.
Okay. Let me hang that reference.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me get that information, I'll see you later tonight.
Yeah. Do you have a phone number for Ethan Roppin or Patty Bowles?
Okay, I realize, but that's, like I said, I was planning on doing this, I was planning on recommending doing the painting next year, but this thing with bronze came up, so I figured I'd go ahead and do it this year.
You were, you were paying it before the board.
Exactly.
They were very reasonable with the charge, didn't they?
Then that's not the way to go, then, uh, I will get that, I will get that, I will come back, like I said, I will come back with the bids for the painting. And, uh, gentlemen, I think that's all that I have.
Okay.
Thanks, okay.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you.
Who submitted the motion that was previously made? What's that you made?
I did, what was the question?
I think I did, I thought, I thought I did.
Okay.
Y'all sounded like a lawyer.
So, so, I do have some questions, we're all, y'all, we're just going ahead and hanging the head, the, uh, the. Uh, Commissioner, uh, we, uh, we wanted to say, I don't know what their schedule is, but if you brought a tab, you could just tell me tomorrow, was I here for late?
I can do that.
It's in section four, not nine.
Oh, yes.
You can change it to.
All right, I'll change it for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, to be honest with you, if I fall down, I'd rather just put window tint on.
Just, when we get the windows.
Paint it.
A paint? Don't overbeak it. Not sure how well, how well that would.
I said, what's the price of tinfoil?
Yeah.
Holding out there, taping all of it?
Scott's.
It's got, yes, no, no tacky mask.
Right. Not.
Executive session.
Executive session.
I just wanna skip it. I wanna skip it.
Listen, why don't we skip it?
That's the only thing left?
That's the only, uh.
I'm.
I was trying to take it.
Go to executive session.
I'm sorry.
Those theater.
All right.
Seven, eighteen.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right.
I thought I did.
Uh, in this case, the recent blinds have to be up in there, because they take their pictures for the, uh, for your license, they're taking it into that light, you've gotta pull those, so you can take a picture, so.